Very good. All right, so welcome, everybody. We're starting a little bit early this evening. Due to the point that we want to have a public workshop on the work that's been done on our 5G small wireless facilities. So we'll lead the meeting off with that. But before we get started, I'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance and if everybody could please rise, find a flag close to you and let's have the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is standard, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice.
Thank you. Okay, so let's get started with the meeting. Just to remind everybody, this meeting is recorded and will be posted. So the first topic is a workshop on the 5G small wireless facilities that the work Brant Nunecker and trustee Lydia Slavy have done. So I'm going to turn this meeting over to them. I believe Brant is going to lead the discussion on the workshop.
So in Lydia, feel free to pipe in whatever you want, but so the the need for the the small wireless facilities ordinance came about because of a federal FCC order from 2018. And basically, it created the situation where you cannot prohibit folks from coming in and doing small wireless facilities in your in your community. It created a two categories of shot clocks, meaning when they come in to apply for approvals for proposed wireless facilities. In your community, you have 60 days to approve. And if they want to go on an existing tower or a pole or structure in 90 days, if they're going to build a new tower. A small wires facility is typically it's defined as a antenna that's like three cubic feet and equipment cabinets, which are 28 cubic feet. So if you look at a traditional site, a cellular tower site, you have the equipment cabinets are much larger and then the antennas are on an 80-foot tower. These are going to be on small towers and it's a small equipment cabinet. It's going to be above the snow line, above the sidewalk, above things that could obstruct, and it's going to have perhaps a canister style antenna on the top. The difference between a small wireless facility and traditional cellular site is that cellular sites are are really governed by dimensional standards, which means typical structures setback, just like a building, you know, it's it's X amount of feet from front yard, it's X amount of seat from side yard. It has limitations on the height of the fencing surrounding it. It has limitations on the tower height, etc. Whereas the design of small wireless facilities to kind of go into the parkways on existing poles and some other things. But what the order suggested is that you can't prohibit these things. You have a short amount of time. A it defines things that prohibit that effectively prohibit the development of these sites in your community. Prohibiting densification of a network, meaning you're they can't they have they have to be a certain distance away, which is unreasonable. The shot again, the shot clock shot clock overrun is considered prohibitive excessive fees. And what it does is allows localities to do limitate to limit local aesthetic requirements, which are reasonable and not burdensome and published in advance. So our our proposed ordinance addresses the coming the coming development of a small wireless facility in our community. So it's as strict as we can be given the the confines, given the outlined terms in the federal communication order of 18 2018-133. It's kind of hard to explain, but it gives us all the protections we need. Let me real quickly say the sections of the proposed draft. Findings, of course. Continue development of new technologies, including fifth generation wireless is likely to require facilities substantially different in size, scale and coverage and prior cellular technologies. It's likely to result in many more facilities throughout the village, with each facility being of a lower height and reduced coverage. It has a substantial potential augment communication resources available to village residents and visitors, which is what we want, especially when there's a dearth of high-speed internet here. But the proliferation of small wire facilities carries a potential for substantial impact on our scenic resources and thereby reducing the quality of life. And we also have this historic district that needs to be protected. There's a section for the application requirements. There's a section that says the that ranks the locational preferences, which we can do. And then there's citing and design standards for both new towers, new poles, and when they go on existing pole in the community. So about nine, it's 10 pages long and we've included it in the agenda. Any questions? Feel free to ask or comments.
And the boards, the boards had seen this previously and has had time to review and we've discussed it. But is there any other questions from the board?
Could I just say again, or Lydia has mentioned this before, but we had a working group with Judy Merritt and Tim Decker and Lydia and me and David Miller, and we came up with this draft. It's been vetted by our the village board, as the mayor says, and it's been vetted by and changed substantially by our attorneys, our zoning attorney. So that's where we're at today. We decided that we would have a workshop to present it to the public and then before it goes to public hearing.
There's no questions from the board. I'm going to open it up for public comment and our questions. So if the if anybody from the public who's on would like to make a comment, I would ask that you identify yourself, identify yourself as where and also if you live in the village or not, and then limit your comments and our questions to three minutes or less. Oh, sorry, Vanessa, I didn't see you with a question.
Can so say this, we we passed this. Can we share it with nearby municipalities? Because it strikes me that like it'd be useful if everybody in our area had this similar sort of regulation, if not the same. I mean, of course, that people might want to adapt it to their own towns, but it seems strikes me as that would would appear less burdensome, you know, if if companies coming in and doing these installations, which we want have have a territory of all like-minded procedures.
I mean, that's a good idea. I was really wanting to send this to the Nikon, the New York Conference of Mayors after it gets passed.
Vanessa, the town of La Grange had already acted and passed a a one, and that was one of the things that came up in one of my meetings, and I brought that forward and shared that with all of you, what the town of La Grange had done as well. So there is some sharing going on. I believe there's going to be differences between communities as to what they want, but
I took the
I don't expect them to adopt the same thing.
Okay.
Section in here, I just basically clipped the La Grange fees and
Were there any definitions in the 2018 FCC piece about like what are what are the what is considered a burdensome fee?
Yeah, so the fees that we put in there are presumptively reasonable. By definition, in the federal order, it says what fees are presumptively reasonable. And I took that or we took that and added a simple provision for cost of living adjustment.
Okay.
Great. Yeah, we took it right out of the order. There's recurring fees and there's initial sort of building and zoning fees. Recurring fees would be when we lease out the or have a license agreement for our our right of way. It's like a lease on the tower.
Martina, will you invite anybody who has their hand up, please?
Joanne.
Hi, Joanne Gilb, 36 Mulberry Street. Does this have anything to do with us getting better internet coverage? Because I know a lot of us in the village with spectrum, it keeps going down, but maybe that has nothing to do with 5G. Thanks.
So I passed an article around to the board that said that the 5Gs, we are in zone one, which is New York City and all Connecticut's in zone one. So they are launching a high-speed internet service and it will allow some of that. I don't think that we're in the development zone right now, but this would be for AT&amp;T Wireless and Verizon, they could easily soon come up here. I think consumers may have an expectation that when they come up here from from the city that they're gonna they're going to just want to have better internet service and it, we don't know, but I'm certainly hopeful that that's true.
Joanne, 5G has been labeled as a broadband killer. So it's being looked as a technology that will replace the existing technologies that are being used for communications. So future equipment, whether it's your TV or your phones, that you see already, will probably all be developed in the framework of having a 5G connection into them.
Thank you.
Linda, go ahead.
Finally. Okay, so with this and it follows nicely what you just mentioned, Gary, this technology will make some prior technologies at some point obsolete, correct? Or likely likely correct in 20 years or 25 years.
Who knows? But yeah, you're already you're already seeing the decline of obviously 2G. And 2G was used as a major technology for a lot of emergency communications as well as 3G in a lot of cellular plans becoming less desirable.
Okay, so I guess my question is this, as we start putting in more utilities, like our discussion recently about telephone poles mounting up, is there a bond in here to take down equipment that has become obsolete, whether it's this equipment in 25 years or any other?
There is a provision for abandonment abandonment. Whether the bond is we don't have a performance bond. Sort of like a basket.
I think as as a village, it would be nice to see us pay attention to that as these utilities go because we're very concerned about our aesthetic in town. And otherwise, every utility is going to say there's no money in it for us, like they told me about having an obsolete telephone pole. In addition to when they put on my property.
Corrected there, we did put a provision here $5,000 for each facility.
And if you look at the removal modification or abandonment in section F, number F of section, whatever, it's on page, page five, there's a paragraph that address the removal modification or abandonment that gives us the village the right within 60 days to notice to actually go in and remove the equipment and charge it back to the provider.
Oh, great. Okay, I am very happy. Thank you.
And also that we have a provision in here where if you cease to pay your license fees and that is deemed abandonment. So we have we have some self-help there.
Great. Thank you.
Steve, go ahead.
Steve, you have to turn off. This is the problem I had. You can't turn off the mic next to you. You're going to have to turn off the one on the little strip in front of you. Above your name, you know, above all the the initials at the bottom of the screen. At least that's the way my screen looks. But that one worked.
Yes, yep, we can hear you.
Oh, great. Hi, guys. My name is Steve Romano. I've been Woodstock, New York for the past 40 years and worked there and I'm on the telecommunications committee. His name is Andrew J. Campinelli, and we have been working with him to develop our regulations for wireless facilities in in Woodstock area. And I can't, you know, we we spent a bunch of money to have him do this and we came up with to adopt draft, which he says is the best one in the country. He he put it together and I I've sent it to you guys so that you had something to work off of and look over and and glean from. It has, it's it's an incredible document, very protective of the town. And if your information, he is a teacher of law at the Association of Towns. Does seminars for the town, so they understand telecom law. So I would highly recommend you guys, you know, take a look at that document I sent you guys.
Okay.
Steve, thank you for sharing that with us.
Andy, go ahead.
Hi, I apologize. I can't get my camera to work. My name is Andy DeFranza and I live at 37 Platt. I'm I realize this is a little off topic, but it's about 5G. Did you review health and environmental studies before formulating your policies?
So we referenced the FCC, which heavily regulates microwave. The thing that is interesting about 5G is that it's a super high frequency. So instead of a bass drum, it's a it's a piccolo. And it's similar as like your AM radio tower might have 10,000 watts or whatever, and it microwaves from that can really and we really can harm human tissue. This is like a super high frequency. That's why the sites have to be close together. And certain things interfere with the radio transmission, like organic materials and buildings and things like that. And that's why they have to be close together. But the FCC heavily regulates that. And we have provisions in here which references back to that.
Well, my concern is that a lot of there's there's currently a movement to have 5G reclassified as a class one carcinogen by the WHO, because they don't think the FCC has done sufficient study. So I just wanted to know if you were getting your recommendations from a variety of sources. And the other issue that's come up recently is I believe we're in a flight corridor and 5G can interfere with avionics. So that would probably be something the state dealt with, but
That's actually the FAA deals with that. And in fact, they prohibited 5G applications from X amount of distance from from runways. The FAA also regulates the height of your site. Your tower. And I used to be in the wireless industry. I was in the wireless industry for about 10 years for the for the bigger cellular sites, but so we dealt with that stuff all the time also. As far as regulating radio frequency things, it's we don't really have that in our, we don't have really subject matter jurisdiction to regulate that stuff. So we're sort of, we have to, you know, rely on the federal government for that one.
Predominantly the FCC to do that.
The FCC, yeah.
Yep. Okay. Well, thank you for your answer.
Thank you.
Steve, did you have another question or comment? Barbara, go ahead.
Okay, um, I looked over the the printed material that you're discussing tonight, and it was in section H that I had a question.
Excuse me, Barbara, could you identify who you are and where you're from?
Yes, of course. I'm Barbara Stempkin. I live in Newport. And yeah, and I'm interested in health. I've had cancer and and I'm try, I try to do things to help communities stay safe. Because people, there are lots of cancer survivors and patients and autistic children and people suffering from multiple illnesses these days. So we all need to be protected. So my question is, in section H, it referred to the fact that it referred, it referred to locating the cell towers on on hospitals, nursing homes, libraries, educational facilities, place and buildings in the village. And it referred to section 12020, which is your your code that's already established about wireless installations. And so I went to 12020 to see what it had to say about schools, homes, church steeples, libraries, hospitals, and I couldn't find it. I looked quickly, admittedly, but can you tell me what 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 12020 might have said about those?
Again, that that refers to dimensional issues like being on a rooftop. Those are rooftop locations.
Yeah, so I use
It would be it would be aesthetic and height standards and things like that.
So you so but what I what I'm, I'm wondering, does that mean that you would put the locate these things on hospitals, nursing homes, educational buildings, libraries? And and all around the village in town? Are you saying that you would locate them, but they have to be aesthetically pleasing?
It's part of the it's part of the locational preference for being on rooftops.
All right.
Yeah, not building new towers and things like that. Again, under the strict, you know, the the strict standards of the of the the FCC, which is if you're talking about, if you're talking about radio frequency, would be 47 CFR 1.1307B, which is actually the requirement for even being a definition of a small wireless facility. That the facility does not result in human exposure to radio frequency in excess of the applicable safety standards specified in that code of federal federal regulations.
Yeah, I'm challenged by the idea that being on a school or church or or hospital or nursing home, library, and all around the village that people would be exposed excessively. That's my concern. Because I was going to to section 12020, hoping that it would say they will not be allowed on those types of buildings, but I couldn't find that. They would be allowed as long as it's aesthetic. But I'd like to see it not allowed because because the people using there, I mean, I wouldn't, I visited your different libraries and businesses in town and I would avoid it if 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 I knew the 5G cell towers on the businesses.
Yeah, I I understand your concern. It's just that we can't preempt the the federal, actually, we're not allowed to preempt the federal government. I mean, we could say, yeah, we can change our locational preferences, but
And Barbara, for 5G to work, there will be small towers situated throughout the village. That's how it needs to establish its frequency and for people to connect. So even if you were, what you're saying is you would not be come to the village of Rhinebeck if we have 5G?
Right. I've gone to concerts in the church that's right in town. I eat in restaurants. I love your restaurants. I visit your library. You know, I have friends who go to your nursing homes. I don't know if the nursing home is in the village or if it's in Rhinebeck. Yeah, the other town, Rhine Cliff, but there, you know, there are different things that I I people, you know, my my friends come and go and I go with them to Rhon Duck.
I mean, I think the Wi-Fi frequency is lower and people have it in their homes. I understand I we just have to go with what the federal government is accepting as a science.
Yeah, perhaps it's not acceptable and and we have to go with something that's not acceptable. That's my concern. And yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to stay with this and try to follow follow along what you're doing.
Yeah, thank you, Barbara, for your comment. So we have, it's now 6:01. I think we have, we have time for one more question. Okay, Steve, I'm sorry if you can unmute yourself right now, but please feel free to submit your comments to our village clerk and we will include them. Like, we're going to move, we're going to move on. The next part of this agenda in conjunction with 5G now is after the board has heard comments from the from the public. We need to decide to whether to set a resolution and set for a public hearing date. All right. So after hearing the comments, I'd like to make a motion that we move forward to pass to announce the facilities, facilities resolution and set the public hearing date. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Brant. Okay, any discussion?
Actually, I think, Brent, I read the Woodstock and some of the other stuff that came down. And actually, I think you guys did a really good job in writing a tight set of rules that were really pretty clear. So I I appreciate you got a lot done with, I think, a good economy and a lot of clarity. So well done.
Thank you. And you know, I use, we used all sorts of different ordinances as for different pieces and different parts of it. And, you know, the federal order and then I viewed
Yeah, I think what I think one of the things that we have to get people to understand is that this is coming at us whether we like it or not, and this is our best chance to manage it.
That's a good point. If we don't put anything in, then that's the difficult thing to explain. The federal order allows them to have certain latitude, particularly with regard to aesthetic standards and things like that.
So we're trying to manage what we can, basically.
Yeah.
It is quite remarkable. We recently had a cellphone tower applicant in front of the planning board and, you know, there's very little that we as a small community are capable of doing in the face of this particular industry. And and so therefore I'm I too am grateful for this tight set of regulations. Thank you to the hard work of the working group.
Yeah, there's a pretty assertive shot clock with the larger cellular towers now also. And that's one thing I would expect the FCC may take another look at, but that's why we didn't put that the shot clock in the ordinance, because it'll be read into it anyway by federal law and I expected I'm actually, you know, I want, I kind of want to personally lobby for it to get relaxed because 60 days for a planning board meeting and approvals and 90 days if they build, that's just way too industry friendly and way too aggressive and difficult for us to comply with.
Well, it's very tight and we can ask them to, you know, change their design. And if they just drag their feet and the shot clock expires, then there's nothing we can do about it. So it's 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 hugely problematic, actually.
And we, what you're saying is you, we've had personal experience with this, right?
Yeah, with the with the large cellphone towers.
Now, as a practical matter, these tolling agreements are used where you just try, you buy more time and if the application's insufficient, but you know, what you're saying is that doesn't always help us either, so.
Yep.
Should I read the resolution for the hearing?
Yeah, Brant, I was going to ask you to read the resolution in and then we can set the public hearing date. public hearing date.
Okay, so again, this is a workshop or a working discussion, so we merely want to set up.
So I just wanted to make sure, Brent, do you have the most recent version of the resolution?
No. I mean, if it weren't, the one that I did, was it changed?
Briefly, slightly, yeah.
Oh.
That's okay. I just had the lawyers review it.
Oh, do you have it?
I do. It's, it's the one in the public folder. I can read it if you want.
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
Yeah, okay. Resolution on, this is, this is actually just to set the public hearing. So when would we like to actually set the public hearing for?
Martina, what's the, it's, uh, we have to.
Can we do it, you know, before, before our next public, before, you know, on March 8th? Can we do it at the same, the same time?
Lydia, what's the requirement for getting this to the, Dutchess County Planning?
Uh, we're fairly sure we can get it to Dutchess County Planning this week, and then they have 30 days to respond, but they tend to do that faster. So if we want, we can delay it to our April meeting. You know, Brandy, do you have thoughts there?
You, if you're referring it, hi, this is Brandy. Sorry, you guys. If you're referring it to Dutchess County Planning and waiting for them to make a determination, you just couldn't vote on it until you have their determination back. So you could certainly have the public hearing and then continue to your, have the public hearing in March and continue to your April meeting, or hold up and do everything in April when you have Dutchess County's determination back.
Or we can, we can set the public hearing for our next meeting pending approval from Dutchess County Planning. If not, we can defer at that time.
Yeah. I guess we're. Okay, shall I read this resolution? And should we set the public hearing for 5:30 on March 8th?
I, yes.
The Village Board desires to provide, whereas the Village Board desires to provide a uniform and comprehensive set of standards for permitting, developing, citing, installing, designing, operating, and maintaining small wireless telecommunications facilities, small wireless facilities within the Village of Rhinebeck. And this board has been presented with and has introduced a draft local law number one of 2022, amending chapter 120 zoning of the code of the Village of Rhinebeck to enact said standards titled Small Wireless Facilities Draft. And whereas the board desires to hear the public's comment on local law number one of 2022 pursuant to the Village Code and the Village Law and Municipal Home Rule Law. Now therefore let it be resolved that a public hearing on central post local law number one of 2022 shall be held on the 8th day of March 2022 at 5:30 o'clock at the Village Hall, 76 East Market Street in the Village of Rhinebeck, New York, and that the village clerk is to prepare and place notice of the time and place of such hearing describing in general terms of proposed local laws to be published once on or before the appropriate day of 2022 in the Kingston Freeman newspaper circulating in said Village of Rhinebeck.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the resolution. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Any discussions? All in favor, say aye for approval for the public hearing and the resolution. Raise your hands. Aye. Thank you. Okay, so, or so, Martina, please work to get this into Dutchess County Planning as soon as possible. Okay?
Okay.
And what is the, there's a 10-day notice requirement also that Martina needs to do before, you know, with publication and stuff like that?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna move on to the next part of the agenda, public comment. Is there anybody who would like to have a public comment? Again, please introduce yourself and your location, and please leave your comments to three minutes or less.
Go ahead, Victor.
Sure, can you hear me?
Yep.
Great. I just wanted to voice some concerns about.
Could you, could you identify yourself, please?
Well, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm Victor Britton. I live on South Street in the village. I do visit New Paltz sometimes, but I live in the village. Um, the, I've got some concerns about, uh, just about the potential balance of thought on, you know, the comprehensive planning group that's being formed. And I'm just concerned because there also sounds like there's a lot of time pressure to move forward quickly. The, from, from what I can gather, that it seems like the majority of the committee appears to be in a field or have a proprietorship that benefits from development. And others in the, in the newly forming group have indicated publicly that they believe Rhinebeck should be densely developed. So I just have concerns. That's fine to have those opinions. I just have concerns that there's balance of thought. I've heard people speak, speak publicly at meetings in the past couple of years about concerns about development. And I, I just can't make a reasonable inference that anybody in this group has that sort of feeling where they're, you know, that, that development should be examined. So, you know, just working with boards, um, you know, kind of behind the scenes, a lot of times, especially in school, I've been a school teacher for almost 30 years. And, you know, a lot of people that end up on the boards, they give up a lot of time, but they end up 85% of the time being the parents of the top 10% of the kids. And so it's very hard to have a broad opinion on these committees, especially if you're under time pressure, and to really think about everybody that you're representing. So I just wanted to express my concern about that sort of balance of thought about limiting development appropriately and also limiting density appropriately, because it, it really feels like there's not that balance of thought there. Thank you.
Thanks, Victor.
K E, go ahead.
Hi, this is Kathleen Evans, and I'm a village resident as well. And I just had a couple questions I'm hoping you can answer for me, just small things. My first comment is about the public comment, how sometimes for me, it's a little bit frustrating that you can't comment while things are being discussed. You have to do it all in the beginning. For instance.
It sounds like her. I want to.
I know later on tonight, you're going to be talking about the, how, how you're turning, how you turn to the speed monitor on Knollwood in a different direction. Very small thing. I was just curious why, since it's just right after a stop sign. And I just can't even imagine many people have a chance to speed up to be registering. The other thing was about brining. I know we've had several, several ice storms, nothing with snow yet, but I haven't seen the brining truck around, and I wonder whatever happened with that. There's been a couple different types of ice storms. I know that's a temperature thing, but haven't seen that. So that's two things. And the other thing I saw on, one of the items to be discussed was the EV charges in town. And I, I'm just curious, I can't comment when you talk about that, what's going to be discussed. And I'm under the impression that the EV charges in Rhinebeck are not charging its usage for people who plug in. Is that true? Or do I need to wait to find out when you discuss it?
So Kathleen, yes, that is true. We currently do not charge people to plug in, plug in at their EV charging stations.
Okay, so I guess I'd love to know about brining, why the, um, the speed sign was changed. And in regards to the EV charging, my personal opinion is I, no one is filling up my gas tank with gas. And I just don't really think that we need to let other people, have the village pay for charging other people's batteries. They can do that at home. They can pay for it like other locations, like we pay for gas. That's it.
Gary, Gary, from what I, yeah, could, I, I, that's actually a really interesting point, Kathleen. From what I understand, the terms of the grant under which we receive the chargers made charging for the power complex or impossible or something until a certain threshold is reached. I don't know, Rick, Gary, do you?
Yeah, so, so we, we had money, there was, we received a grant, and in that grant, we put money in to cover our electrical usage of that. We have now charged all of that back and got reimbursed from the grant from, for doing it. And we're now outside of that window.
Correct. And that's been a while. That hasn't, that's not very recent. I believe it's been a year or two at the village hall, anyway.
Rick? Well, two things. In terms of the brining, I can just say, I know that brining only works in a very limited number of situations and a very limited number of environmental conditions, and we haven't had those conditions. And we've had a couple really kind of nasty, complicated storms. So there's not been the opportunity to spread brine, at least for us.
Well, so, but let's, let's address the brining issue as well, since you're on it. We've been looking for a source for brining, a reliable and competitive pricing source, and we are hoping to be able to secure that from the town of Rhinebeck. We are unable to secure getting that brining solution from the town of Rhinebeck at a, you know, and therefore, the cost to getting it over in Kingston and other places became cost prohibitive for us to do it.
So it sounds like that's really nothing that we're even considering doing if the optimal weather conditions are prime for brining. We just don't have the capacity to do that right now, because we don't have a brining solution.
Not during this winter season. We do not have a, a source for the brine.
Okay.
Okay. And in regard to the speed sign, yes, Kathy, I'll answer that question as well. We, we had, we had a complaint from residents on Knollwood that speeding in the other direction was not being monitored and that cars were traveling extra fast. So I made the decision to rotate the sign for a 30-day period to give those people who needed the information and collect the data and supply back to them and see whether we had a, actually had an issue with speeding in the opposite direction. Fortunate to be able to turn that sign and easily provide the answers. And hopefully, at the end of this month, we'll collect the data and have those answers as to whether we have a speeding issue on Knollwood in that direction. It will be rotated back to its direction that it was in at the end of the month.
Thanks, Gary. You know, that was one thing I was always curious about. You do collect data from those electronic signs, the number of cars passed, what their speed is and how many speeding that is able to be collected. Great. Okay, thanks all.
Um, also, I just wanted to mention, Kathleen, that the Comprehensive Plan Committee has been in touch with Dutchess County and the Department of Transportation. And we're going to be doing an updated survey of a bunch of our roads, and Knollwood is one of them, on, uh, basically the traffic study the Department of Transportation does. It does it every year on Route 9 and 308. It does it once every three years and a few other streets in town. And we've added a whole list of roads to their traffic survey, requesting that they do that work this year, so that the Comprehensive Plan Committee has the most updated information on a variety of the roads that face a lot of traffic and potential speeding, so that we can get a, a good grip on that as well. So that, the results of that information will be out, you know, as part of the comprehensive plan process.
Thank you very much. Thank you all.
Susanna, go ahead.
Susanna, you're muted.
I think she put a comment up asking that South Street be included in the traffic survey.
It is.
Oh, my God. I can't unmute. Oh, I got muted. Sorry, I don't know why my mouse pad is not responding. I kept yelling, I can't unmute into a mute thing. So, um, Susanna, I live at 11 Manor Road. I actually, Victor and Kathleen both stole what I was going to ask about, but I do want to reiterate both of what they said, both about the comprehensive plan. And, you know, I've brought up those EV charging stations many, many times as a regressive tax. And I just want to be on record one more time that that is a regressive tax. People who can afford those cars are getting free power and people who have used cars or $2,000 are paying, you know, a gallon to fill up their cars. So I just, again, want to just be on record for that. The sign, I was very curious about the sign as well, because I remember the first time I asked about it, I thought that it would be facing that direction because of the school and that you'd want the data of how fast people were going by the school. So I was actually kind of happy to see it turned around to see, because a lot of people blow through that stop sign at Manor and Knollwood. So I, but you told me originally that the, the speeding problem was in the other direction. So I am also curious, I hope you'll report out on that data when it ends. So, thank you.
Joanne, go ahead.
Hi, hi, Joanne Gale, Mulberry Street again. Um, did I hear that correctly, that we are now paying for the electric charging for other people? And that was one question. And then the other question was, and I'll go on record saying I, I do not like that. Um, the other question was the DOT stuff, are they also going to be able to address crossing walks from, you know, across Route 9 by Chestnut Street or Platte Street for people that want to walk? Those are my two questions. Thank you.
I, I can take the crosswalk one. The, all, all of these questions are going to be addressed by the Comprehensive Plan Committee, Joanne. And the, the one that I have an answer for right now is the traffic survey that Dutchess County is elevating to the Department of Transportation, that, yes, Sarah, South Street will be included on. And all of the streets around the schools, as well as all of the streets that people typically use to avoid the light at East Market and at 308 and 9, as well as all of the streets that go down to River Road. So, you know, most of the, basically most of the streets in the village. And in terms of, you know, sidewalks and crosswalks and things like that, the Comprehensive Plan Committee will be addressing those. I just don't have a, we're still working on the structure of the Comprehensive Plan Committee. And so, you know, that, that will happen when it happens. And I just don't know, I don't have an answer for you on that right now.
And Joanne, as we stated before, we currently are subsidizing the electricity for the car charging stations.
Yeah. That's why it's on the agenda.
Gary, just for clarification, did the grant money run out for both stations? I remember at one time, one station ran out and then the other station was still, we were still being reimbursed for.
Yeah, we are now, we are now outside of both, of the term for both stations.
So when will we stop reimbursing?
So, Joanne, this is a discussion for later. If you want to hang on, I believe Vanessa has, has teed this conversation up, so I'll go, leave it to Vanessa to bring it up in the, later on in the agenda.
Sarah Miller, go ahead.
Hi, Sarah Miller, South Street. This last storm, Friday, Saturday, was brutal. There was three, four, five inches of ice on many sidewalks, my own included. Has there been a grace period for people to remove that snow? I know we got a email from Gary just before the storms, you know, reminding everybody that it was 24 hours. But I do, you know, walking around on the street, I should mention, I'm seeing that a lot of neighbors have not been able to clear or have not cleared. So has there been any extension on that 24-hour?
Yeah, so Sarah, that's a great question. And it's, timing is everything, how I put that into my newsletter, not knowing that we were going to have a, a major ice storm that made things difficult. How fortuitous of me to predict that, right? So it is difficult. And even here in the village, the sidewalks that we are responsible for, they were difficult to clear. And we were not able to get all of our sidewalks cleared And we were not able to get all of our sidewalks cleared within 24 hours of the storm. So I would not expect the public to be able to do the same in that period. So by the lack of just going out and forcing it, you know, we are essentially giving people some more time because of the ice. But we are and have been proactive about contacting everybody after a period of time to get their sidewalks cleared. And we have, we have a standard form letter that we send out for that.
Joanne, go ahead.
Joanne, you're muted.
I didn't mean to raise my hand.
Well, the teacher called on you, Joanne. All right, let's move on. Thank you, everybody, for your public comments. It's always well-liked and appreciated. Next thing on the agenda is an appointment to the Panda Board. So I'll take the lead on this one. We've been three years without having a representative from the village of Rhinebeck. Three years ago, we pursued this and had a candidate, but it didn't work out. And quite honestly, we've been lax on being able to have somebody represent us on a Panda, on Panda, on serve on the board. I think Panda is an important attribute that we all have, that we get to use here in the village of Rhinebeck. And it's not that we've been out of touch with Panda. We communicate very often with them. But to have somebody sitting on the board that represents us, I think would be a great opportunity. So an opportunity has come forward and there's a candidate, I don't know if Dana, Dana Wiedman is on tonight. I thought I saw her log in. If she's here, she could talk as well. But she is come forward and would like to serve on the Panda Board and represent the village of Rhinebeck. She does not live in the village of Rhinebeck, but I don't view that as a necessity anymore. As long as we have somebody that works with our, with the board here and communicates our interest and desires. So Dana becomes very well-posed for this. She's a professor of communications, media arts and films at Duchess County, Duchess Community College, was chair of the Communications and Media and Arts Program at Dutch Community College from 2008 to 2018. She's a treasurer of Upstate Women in Film and Television and on the board and was Panda Chair for five years. She stepped down after just cleaning her own documentary called Nobody's Perfect about discovering genetic mutation that causes heart failure in her family. But she's moved back to the area last September, bought a house and lives in Elizaville. And I, she comes recommended by Eric Reibek, who is on the board and has been serving as Chair. He's recommending her to help represent the village, the village of Rhinebeck. So I'm going to make a motion to accept the candidate of Dana Wiedman for our representative to the Panda Board. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Vanessa. Any discussion?
Yeah, great to have a filmmaker to talk to. Thank you for such a nice comment.
All right, I'm looking forward to continuing working with Dana. All in favor, say aye and raise your hand. Okay. Dana, if you're here, are you here, Dana? I don't have.
But Danielle is.
Oh, hey, hi Danielle.
Hey, guys. How's everybody doing? Good, how's everybody?
Good. We miss you.
Oh, I miss you guys too. We'll be back hopefully one day. Actually, I just wanted to thank you for voting in Dana. I've known Dana since I went to college for Communications and Media Arts back in 2000. She graduated in 2004. She was one of my professors, so I've known her 20 years now. And I think she'll be great for you guys. So I really do appreciate it. And, you know, hopefully, we can get together and do something soon when all this is over.
I also, maybe, maybe next month, Danielle, huh?
Okay, yeah, I'll reach out. All right. Have a good night, everybody.
Good night.
Have a good night, Danielle.
Thanks, Danielle.
Okay, moving on. Center Street Engineering Services, Brandt.
Yeah, I mean, if Brandy's here, she could go over this scope of work for the proposal. Hi, Brandy.
Hi, good evening. Yes, let me pull that up. So Center Street, running between Livingston and South Street, May, if you all know, have, as you all may know, has a two-inch water line. That's far below what is recommended for new installations. And in fact, minimum recommended water line size for fire flow protection is a six-inch line. So given the progress that the village has been making on water improvements throughout the village, this has definitely been identified as a location that is in dire need of an upgrade and will help provide additional reliability to the distribution system by replacing the old two-inch line with a new either six or eight-inch line. So the length of the line replacement will be about 1,000 feet. And the work will include replacing the valves and the service connections and any hydrants along that length. And we do have to cross East Market Street, and that is a state route. So we have to do some permitting with the DOT. But we've already reached out to Joseph Taylor, the permit engineer for Duchess County. And so he's aware that we want to move forward with this work. So he said, it's maintenance work. It shouldn't be a significant permitting effort. So we've provided, yep.
I'm sorry, I, I thought that, I didn't notice this. I thought we were going from Market Street to South Street. From what I understand, the Center Street section that's between Livingston and Market, they have service lines that go all the way up to Livingston, et cetera, and they may be copper. So I'm not, I was under the understanding that those might, those service lines might be in pretty good shape and that they're fed off of the main. I think we have some information.
Something we should check. Yeah, I mean, if Ryan has line cards for that, we definitely want to take a look at that.
Yeah, we have some information about that. If you think it's insufficient, then yeah, we need to do this whole, this whole route, but still.
Yeah, Brant, there definitely is, you're correct, Brant, there definitely is our service lines coming off the main off of Livingston. What I don't know, from when we did the water projects, is if it feeds all of them on that north side of Market Street.
I think so.
So we need to figure that out.
Yeah, I think Alan's got some information on that.
Alan, Alan does? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, well, we can certainly take a look at that. So you were expecting this was just connecting the water main from South Street to East Market Street?
Yeah.
And then what, would you abandon the two-inch line? Because that two-inch line is there for redundancy and distribution purposes. So I think there's still merit in replacing it.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
And maybe, I don't know, maybe Brandy's right that the copper lines are sufficient. But would it be better to have the people on the north side of Market Street fed off of a new line versus those long copper lines that are extending down the street? I don't know the answer to that. I'm just proposing it as a what-if.
Yeah, let's just look into it.
Okay. All right, well, we can certainly do that. Yeah. So, so our task order is to prepare the engineering plans, so the design, complete the permitting. This sort of improvement also needs to be reviewed and approved by the county health department. And then, once permits and approvals are in hand, move forward with bidding this to contractor. And that'd be assisting the village with that bidding effort, conducting a pre-bid meeting, opening the bids, reviewing the bids, and making a recommendation for a ward to the village board. We'd anticipate working fairly closely with Martina on that effort. And then, as far as going to construction, we'd have some limited construction support for the village. It's a, it's a fairly small project. We figure, you know, it's less than three to four weeks of construction activity, all told, from start to finish. Obviously, dependent on the availability of paving, you guys have been through water main replacement projects before. So sometimes the timing can stretch out a little bit. But actual digging in the street is probably just a couple of weeks.
So based upon our, our experience with the other water main projects, it seems like this is an opportunity to fix the streets, the curbs, the curb cuts while we're in there. And I was surprised that we didn't, I thought this was going to be part of the proposal that we'd be looking at both replacing the water main and basically reforming the streets. And I assume from Livingston all the way to south because we have, well, the streets are basically crumbling. The streets basically crumbling through there. And also, we have an oddball set of curbs and a whole mishmash. And it would be nice to see those streets, if we're going to have them opened up, we're going to be digging up the asphalt. Nice to see those streets designed properly, both for safety and aesthetics. So I would like to see that be part of the, part of, part of, part of the scope of work, at least for Brandy, to include that, because I think it's a mistake if we're in there and we got everybody there, that, you know, we lay down all this asphalt and then come back three years later and dig it all up again. So I think we have the opportunity, just like we learned with the project on, on the north side of town here, that if, if we're there, we should go for it. So is there a way we can add to this, to this task order or create another one? Or how should we do that?
Well, let's, let's keep the discussion going here while we're in it. Because Brandy, you and I had discussed a long time ago about this water line and the need to replace it and how important it is to do that because of the breaks we had right here at Christmas time. And we're filling holes today out here because we had to do the dig. For it. But we also, what we discussed was the drainage. And this would be an opportune time to, as what Rich, Rick mentioned, to address the street stuff, but also to address the drainage issues that are there. So we can possibly eliminate, from what I understand, the drains go now head towards Landsman Kill. And we could eliminate some water heading, you know, to, into the Landsman Kill if we can, you know, given the fact that we have some great soil here.
Yeah.
And I don't see that as part of this proposal.
We, we did not include design of the storm drainage system. And just so that you're all aware, the sort of the primary trunk drainage line for the east side of the village begins up on Mulberry Street, north of Livingston Street, and then comes down Livingston and then down Center Street, over South Street, and then cuts through Crosslots to the Landsman Kill. So it is a place where storm drainage currently goes. We do know there has been some problem with some of the storm drainage. You will probably remember last fall, there was some, some pretty significant ponded water at the north end of Center Street and Livingston Street. And turned out there were some, some clogged basins, but also a water main through a drainage pipe, which was restricting the drainage flow and causing the water to back up in the street. But when we had the camera do the analysis of the drainage in there, we realized that those drainage pipes are really quite old and, and starting to deteriorate. So, you know, there are some economies of scale that can be had by doing the design all at one time and creating a larger project. That, that does, of course, increase the overall cost of the project. So the scope that we had identified in the task order that's before the board this evening is really just limited to the water main replacement between Livingston and South Street. And that would include physically saw cutting a trench for replacement of, for installation of a new pipe and, and either abandonment in place or removal of the old pipe. So it would be a very sort of straightforward, focused, targeted, if you will, project. And I don't disagree with Rick at all. You know, I think there's lots of opportunities to do streetscape improvements in there. So, you know, it's entirely up to the board as far as, do you want to move forward with a larger scope project? We're going to get the survey. It's going to be, you know, a sidewalk to sidewalk, one end of the street to, you know, from Livingston Street to South Street. We'll have that survey. So you'll have that as the base, basis for design moving forward. We would want to talk to the surveyor, though, about picking up the details of some of the streetscape and drainage structures if the village was thinking of moving in a direction of expanding the scope, though. Right now, we've got them just doing the, kind of the minimal survey that we need for the water line improvement.
So Brandy, again, you're saying that, like, that's kind of a terminal, like, the, the main part goes Livingston down center in front of Village Hall and then to south and then through the lawns?
Yep. Yeah, that's correct.
Behind Victor Britton's house.
I'm not exactly sure which residence it is, but yeah. You are, okay. Perfect. You know exactly where it is.
Okay.
Out of, out of curiosity, is this, what is our timing? Like, if, if we actually expand the scope of the task order to include the streetscape, is this something that we can do this summer? And so therefore, Center Street could be, you know, the, one of the paving works that we do this summer as part of Rick's overall plan? You know, what are we talking about in terms of timing? Just out of curiosity?
Timing is a really great question, Lydia. We had roughly scheduled this out just to see if it could all be done by November, when the paving plants typically close. Typically, they close around Thanksgiving. This year, we had a mild winter, so they extended a little bit further. But this is, just this scope alone is tight to get completed by the, by the end of the season. We think we can squeeze it in if we move really quickly and efficiently. And if the health department can turn around our approvals quickly, and if the DOT can turn around our approvals quickly. But, you know, when you go out to bid, you need to be out to bid for about a four-week period. And then, you know, it takes a couple of weeks to review the bids and make the recommendation. And then the contracting period takes about four weeks. And, and then your contractor's got to order their materials. And all those supply chain issues are improving. There have been some supply chain issues related to pipe. Right now, we're seeing ductile iron pipe, which is what we'd recommend for this installation, being more available than the PVC plastic pipe. So we continue in that vein, but we would continuously be monitoring that just to make sure we're going to be able to get materials. Because that's the number one we hear, number one thing we hear from contractors right now is that, you know, they want to know that they're going to be awarded a project because they need to order the materials immediately.
So in some respects, we're.
Lydia, excuse me, I would not be in favor of paving this street as part of Rick's plan unless we were addressing the drainage issues, because otherwise, we're coming back and digging it all up again.
Well, right. I mean, that, that was the point of my story, is that, like, you know, if we can get it all done this summer, the whole thing done this summer, then great. But I do, you know, but if we can't get the whole thing done this summer, you know, can we limp along for another year with the state of the water pipe on Center Street? And, you know, given how frequently it seems to break and how destroyed Center Street is as a result, I don't know the answer to that question.
We could also, we can trench it. And well, no, that's going to be a lot of trenches.
Yeah.
And cold patch. We can trench and cold patch.
That, that is an option, you know, just patch it and then come in in the spring. What we would recommend, if you were going to expand and add drainage, is that the contractor, you know, saw cut the pavement and install the new water main and the new drainage pipe and patch that if they miss the paving window. And then you'd have to come back in the spring and they would mill the whole thing and, and then overlay it with new pavement. And they'd probably do the curb work at that point in time, Rick. You know, we wouldn't have them do any of the streetscape work until, until they were going to be doing the work kind of concurrent with the paving. So, so we would just focus on the pipe piece this year. And you would do the streetscape piece in the spring of 2023.
So the real question becomes, how do we pay for this, right? One is this task order, which is $40,000 to do, to do that. But the number two is, we had identified this project as part of the ARP funding, which in July, we're hopefully, you know, we'll get round two, which will give us, you know, another $130,000 to put towards a project. And we'll have at that time, $240,000 sitting aside that we could dedicate. But we had also talked about Village Hall renovation in addition to this. So at some point, we said, we need to get the cost for the Center Street project and the cost for the. the improvements to Village Hall, uh, and then have that discussion. And it doesn't sound like we're ready yet to have that discussion because we don't know total cost. Or do, or do you have an estimate, Brandy, on what this whole project would cost?
I don't, if we're adding the drainage piece, um, or streetscape, I'd need to go back and just look at that. Um, and I'd be hesitant to give you like an off-the-top-of-my-head number right now. So I, but I can certainly get back to you on that. Um, water main, it, of it by itself, we typically, um, use a ballpark number, um, of $250 a linear foot. So if we're doing a thousand feet, which is what I had originally thought we were doing for the scope of this, I'd be, say, $250,000 for the construction. Um, and that is, that's just trenching and patching. That's, you know, not a lot of complicated installation, so.
Yeah, and that would be all, that would be the total ARP budget.
We have to do the, we're gonna end up probably needing to do the service lines, do the curb box, new curb boxes, and then ask the homeowners to connect to the curb box with a new line, because they're probably, well, depending on who does not have copper, which might be everyone.
Yeah, tha- and that's something we definitely want to work with Brian on and look at his service cards there. It doesn't appear to us that there are a lot of services, but, you know, there's probably somewhere in the order of 12 to 18. Um, and we just don't have a good sense right now of what the condition of those are. And with the, the state and federal government wanting us to move away from any kind of lead connection, a full replacement of service lines would be advisable.
Well, we have to do the lead pipe analysis anyways.
Correct.
That's already on, that's already on our list.
Right now, we say in the task order that during construction, we'd have the contractor make observation, um, at the curb box so that they can give us some feedback as to whether or not there may be a leaded connection there. And then we can use that information to advise the homeowner. But yeah, I mean, I think practically speaking, you want to get lead out of your service, services wherever you can.
We, we only found one lead service line in the, for that whole project we did.
On, on 9G, okay, that's.
Yeah, on the north side.
Did that prove the same when you went up the side streets?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Everything.
Good, that's wonderful.
Well, but we were fortunate, a lot of that was done. Brandy, a lot of that was done over there before.
Oh, was it? Okay.
Yeah.
We had a lot of galvanized, though.
Okay, Vanessa?
Um, I, I just wanted to bring up Rick's point of wanting to look at some of the streetscape and the, um, the curb cuts and everything. Do we, what is, what's the timeline for that? Um, was it the block grant that we went for? Where we did a whole, um, a whole plan for those? What's the timeline for when we would find out about that grant?
So the block grant that we applied for was to make, um, handicap accessible improvements at the intersections, um, along East and West Market Street and some of the side streets, um, including Center Street and, um, East Market Street. Um, that funding, uh, we won't know about until sometime in May or June. Um, it's tied to the federal government's budget. And so ti- typically, my experience is we find out sometime in like late May, early June.
Mo- most of that work was west of Center Street. It was, uh, Route 9 at, um, Livingston. It was Garden at West Market Street. Um, it was the entrances and the exits to, um, the municipal lot. Um, so that was the main focus of that grant.
Yeah.
So getting back to this, I mean, basically, this would come out of the water budget, what you proposed. And we could come up with a, a different estimate for your services for the, the other pieces.
Yeah, we absolutely could.
If we did go from, a couple of things, if we did go from Market Street to south instead of Livingston to south, would it still be $40,000? Would your estimate still be $40,000?
No, it would be a little bit less.
Right.
Yeah.
And then, d- does this proposal structure that in if you, the 40 is the outside limit, but it's, it's actually your actual cost, right?
That's correct.
So we could approve it this evening.
Yeah, I mean, the, it's, it's such a limited area to, to do design work on. And we feel like we have a pretty good grasp of the issues there, so we're able to give it a fairly firm cost, yeah.
I mean, that's a positive, the, the positive fact is that at least we would have this piece designed. Whether we decide to go forward with it or not, it still would be a GPD.
Yeah, would, would it make sense to sort of design the whole thing and then choose, choose what to actually do once we have an idea of what it's gonna take to do the whole thing? Um, or, I, I'm trying to figure out the most efficient use of, um, engineering time on this.
Sure, yeah. The economies of scale to do it all at one time are, are certainly efficient for us. Um, do, adding the design of the storm drainage system, um, is relatively straightforward. We would want to do a small amount of hydraulic modeling, um, just to make sure pipes are sized properly, because we don't have any idea what the basis for sizing the storm drains was when those pipes were put in 70, 80 years ago. Um, and what we do know is that, um, the climate is giving us a different type of storm with a higher intensity. So we see a lot more rainfall coming down in a shorter period of time. So we, we would want to add some design to the drainage system. As far as the streetscape is concerned, I think we'd want to get some feedback from this board as to, um, you know, where you would want to draw the line for street improvements. Is it just to the back of the curb? Or is it to, you know, the sidewalks, you know? So we would want to understand that. And then, you know, clearly, other ancillary components to streetscape, you know, there's always the landscape component. Right now, you've got, um, the street, a curb, a little bit of a tree lawn and a sidewalk. Um, you know, would street be, street trees be included, you know? So there would be some questions, there's some variability to the streetscape component that we would want to get some feedback from you guys on. Um, as, uh, as far as like bidding it, Lydia, we can take an approach where we would bid it as alternates so that you have like different tiers of bids. So maybe your base bid is just the water main replacement with trenching. Um, and maybe your next tier bidding it is add the drainage. And, you know, your third piece is overlay the, the improved street. And then you guys get the quotes that tell you what that range of cost is. Um, one thing I will say is what we're hearing about the infrastructure money that should be coming in, um, from the state is that having shovel-ready projects, um, is gonna make municipalities eligible for dollars. So if you can say, yes, we can go and we can do this work right away, that'd be good. So it might not be a bad idea if you feel like you can do it now to put that design on the shelf, um, even if you only decide to go forward with the ARPA-funded, um, water main replacement project. And then you could come back in a, a year or two. Um, we're still all learning kind of week to week. And you guys, I'm sure, are hearing things too, um, that the state is trying to figure out how funds are gonna get dispersed to communities.
So Brandy actually answered part of my question, because I was gonna ask, what is the ability to get infrastructure money to do all of this? And if we had, were shovel-ready, we would want to be shovel-ready with water drainage, you know, and, and streets to.
Right.
Go for, go for the total, go for the total package. Even if it's not infrastructure money that gets delayed, you know, there's opportunity for additional grants here to do the whole project as well.
Right, right, right.
That.
Yeah.
And we could work with you on.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. The other thing I have not heard, and I think it'd be worth checking, and, and Rick, you may have some insights into this, but CHIPS funds can be used for drainage also. Um, and I know most communities, you know, hold on to that for paving projects, and, and I respect that. But, um, if the CHIPS money becomes a larger block grant, um, to communities, you may see that you've got an increase in funds available for not only paving projects, but you could potentially target that money for drainage improvements as well.
And, and we were very conservative last year because we didn't know what was going on with our CHIPS money. So we've actually got a pretty hefty rollover coming into this, uh, coming into this year. So I think we're, we're in good shape for that. Yes, it's, it's all that hardscape physical infrastructure, so drainage and stuff, for sure.
Yeah. And if that, the problem is that it goes right into the Landsman Kill. I don't know, maybe there is some other kind of funding in terms of protecting the watershed, um, by redoing the drainage there.
I was on a call last week with, um, with Brian, um, I always mispronounce his last name. I think it's Giore from, um, um, the Green Innovation Grant Program. And we were just talking about, um, green infrastructure projects. But, um, he said that they are gonna be sticking with the regular CFA cycle. So he doesn't see the green infrastructure piece, Vanessa, going to like any kind of separate pot of, of, um, uh, or separate funding stream that would come to villages or, and towns directly. So I, I think we would have to make a little bit of an inquiry to try and find a green infrastructure piece. But I love the idea of, of implementing green streets along Center Street with the Village Hall being right there. It's just such a great place to make a statement.
All right, so in the event of the time, I'm gonna make a proposal. Uh, I'd like to propose that we ask engine, time bond to come back with a tiered approach so we have an idea of what the whole project looks like. You know, including water drainage and streetscape. And then we can pick and choose and decide, uh, where we can go from there. Rather than just, I agree, getting this done and on a table. But if we do this part, we're, then we're committed to do the rest. And because we dug up the street and everything else, so I think we're kind of stuck there. But we still may make that call, so I'd like to see a total package before moving forward. So that's my, that's my motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
I mean, I, I, I think all of this work is important, the water, the water work's important, the, 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 the sewer is important, the streetscape's important. Uh, we've been talking about this for a long time, that we were gonna try to do some major improvement along Center Street. We've all known how bad it is in this moment.
Gary, may I ask a question?
Sure.
What would you anticipate for timing on having us come back to? Um, my, and I only asked that just because I had laid out before that this is a fairly tightly scheduled project to get a water main in this year. Um, and we were hoping to get approval on that, you know, to, tonight, and then begin pretty much right away gathering the information and getting the plans together so that we can get them to the health department and the DOT as soon as possible. I am hearing we'd need to probably look at the scope, but is there any chance that we could get approved at a second meeting this month and not necessarily have to wait for four weeks?
Uh, what is your turnaround time? I'm gonna put it back on you.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to commit to getting you something updated by the end of the week, then.
We have, we have meetings, um, scheduled, um, coming up.
We have a meeting coming up on February 22nd.
22nd and the first.
Okay.
So I, we could revisit this on the 22nd, which is very appropriate because it's budget planning and all kind of, our minds are gonna be thinking about money to begin with.
Okay, okay, we'll get something back to you for the 22nd then, um, depending on how the board votes.
All right, so I have a motion, I have, we have a motion, we have a second. Any other discussion? All in favor of tabling this to come back with a completed proposal until February, on February 22nd? Say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
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 All right, that's sound, sound, sounded unanimous and looked unanimous. So Brandy, February 22nd?
No problem.
Thank you, Brandy.
I'm making a note right now. You're welcome.
Brandy.
Okay, moving on, approval purchase order for Asher Dam inspections. I'm gonna try to move through this as quickly as possible, but still be as complete as possible. When Kathy Tegmeyer came on board, one of the first things I asked her to look at was our Asher Dam from an emergency response and emergency coordinator capability. One of the things, uh, which she did, and we found that our documentation was all out of date, which has now been updated and submitted to DEC. So there's great communication and contact points and emergency preparedness is all done. But also in that discovery process was that we have been delinquent on a very important task on Asher Dam for quite some time. And that is the visual and biannual inspections for Asher Dam. So one of the things we were required to do is do a monthly inspection, monthly visual inspection. And I included that form into all of your packages. And then, uh, twice a year, do a more deeper dive into a, uh, beyond the visual, but actually look deeper into the dam construction. So I've reached out to several companies. One was Seaway Divers. Seaway Divers, Grant, you may know, uh, they worked with the water department up at, at the reservoir as well. And they are also had done work on the, um, on Asher Dam after Hurricane Irene. And to see if they would be interested in doing this task. They haven't done it before, but they, after going back and forth, they did submit a quote to be able to do that. And they submitted a quote of $1,450 per inspection. So that's six months, so it's a little over $8,000, uh, to do the visual inspection only. I also reached out to Erdman and Anthony, who were the engineers for Asher Dam. They pretty much consolidated all their efforts into the Buffalo area and graciously said, we would love to do it, but we're so far away, we would be so expensive, you don't want us. And I was thankful for that very honest response from them. I reached out to then all of our supervisors and mayors to those who have dams. And each fiscal has a dam in Wapping, Jersey. And they use a company called Lang and Tully, uh, to their inspections. I reached out to them and have not been able to get a response after numerous attempts. And I also then reached out to Brandy, our tie and bond here, uh, to see if they would. And they do do this. I, and I was pleased to hear that they have done this and are capable of doing it and are right here. And they submitted a scope, a task order labeled 2022 number 27, which addresses not only doing the visual, but invest, covers doing the, um, detailed visual inspection, which is two of them. And they would start in March of this year. And that would be for all of it, that we would need, would be the $10,500. So this is over and above what Seaway Divers was doing. It covers four of the informal visual inspections. And Seaway Divers wouldn't be starting to march either. And the detailed visual inspection, uh, for $5,300, two of those, for a total of $10,500 to do that work. And this will be an annual cost, by the way. Doing this, well, this year doesn't get us away, we have to continue to do this as part of.
We have to do this annually?
Annually, yes. And we have not done it. I will say it was a task that I had put on, um, before, and that task was never completed. So we are really in violation here of getting the dam inspected. And I would really like to move forward and get this done. So I would like to make the proposal, make the motion that, uh, I really like Time Bond's proposal, because it gives us the total package. And both of our inspections, and I don't have to research to find another engineering source or somebody else just to do the biannual and accept their bid for the 2022 year of $10,500.
Second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Rick. Discussion.
Where does this money come from?
So I'm proposing that I do a tran, that we do a transfer from Parks and Rec. Uh, Karen's on, but I believe we're like $49,000 or some amount in that. And we transfer it out of that capital account and cover that cost. And I've met with Karen and Chi Bries.
Yeah, so I will need a resolution for that as well, for the transfer.
Does it get less pricey as, like, in year two, you, now you've done it the, the year before, so? Is it?
We could go out for bid again, Brant, how's that?
Is there any less, less to it then, the second year, third year, fourth year?
So I, I spent a great deal of time and I did not answer that question. I didn't ask for a multi-year. I asked for this year to just get this project going, so that we get caught up on it. But that, that's a good question, and we could go out for bid again for 2023.
Did, did you want me to comment at all there?
Yeah, sure, if you have.
So, so you, you have with your dam, um, uh, an inspection and maintenance plan that was put in place by Erdman Anthony many years ago. And it was based on a certain set of conditions that existed at that point in time. You've since done, um, a considerable amount of, um, improvements to the dam. Uh, that said, it's also been through several large storms and needed some emergency repairs. So nobody's really taken a comprehensive look at the dam in, in a, a number of years. So, you know, at, at some point, we'll probably need to have a discussion about taking a more comprehensive look at the dam. Um, but in doing that, But in doing that, that creates the opportunity for the village to restructure its inspection and maintenance plan and program. And also I think there are instances where although we do do this work and we're actually doing this similar work for a couple of dams here in Duchess County right now. There are also sometimes highway department personnel or GPW personnel who can become trained to do this work over time. So I, I think we, we just want to take an approach where let's get our arms around it. Let's see what you've got out there and then let's talk about how we can be more efficient moving forward.
Okay.
Yes. Thank you for that, Brandy, because I did, I did consider how that we could do it in-house and I, given the, given the current staffing, I wasn't able to come up with an answer for that. Let me check our territory. All right. We have a motion. We have a second. I'm going to call for a vote. All in favor of accepting Time Bond to do the informal visual inspection and the detailed visual inspections for 2022? Say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
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 All right.
Sorry, I, I know I'm not.
Thank you. All right.
Gary, Gary, can we do a resolution to transfer the 10,000 from Parks and Rec?
Yes, you want to do, you can do that, Karen, if you would like. Oh, you just did it. I'd like to make a mo, I'll do it. I'll make a motion.
So.
Transfer the money from Parks and Rec. Do I have a second?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good.
All right. All in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
All right.
All right, Brandy, thank you. Looking forward to getting this part of the project moving on.
You are welcome. Would you like me to hang out for any other items on your agenda this evening?
Um, maybe because we're going to be talking about in, in number 10, changing the street light.
Okay.
Our blinking light.
I'll turn the camera off.
Make them up there.
I'll be here.
I, I trust that Rick has done due diligence on this, but maybe if you could hang out for a little bit, that would be great.
Not a problem. Yep.
Okay, I'm going to move on. Hiring. Next, I'm going to turn it over to Lydia for the hiring of the building, planning and zoning personnel. And we broke this into two parts. Part A is to a part-time temporary secretary to planning board and zoning and board of appeals and part B, temporary seasonal employees. And Lydia, I'm going to turn it over you. You sent out a detailed note to the board.
I did, and I received no questions in response, so I'm hoping that there aren't a lot of questions. But just to, just to reiterate and explain to the public, it has become clear under the leadership of Ken McLaughlin in, in, in the building, planning and zoning office that as, in, in addition to the increase of workload, given all of the construction that's been happening in the village during the pandemic, that are, we need more people, we need more workers. The clerk is, is, there's, he, he does not have enough time to do what needs to be done. And there, and he cannot, he, he himself cannot do all of the work that needs to be done. So I'm asking the board to consider three new part-time positions. As I explained in detail, these will not add to the, to, to this year's budget at all. It's just redistributing funds that have already been budgeted that we will not spend. And I'll, I'll start with the two seasonal employees. The building, planning and zoning office in Ryanbeck is not, has not scanned or stored digitally any of our information. And the filing system is not maintained appropriately. And so we, I am asking the board to allow me to bring in two parts, according to sort of civil service laws, these would be two part-time seasonal employees to start the process of organizing, packing up all of the documents, sending them off to be scanned and, and then organizing a full digital filing system that would be parcel by parcel by parcel. So that anyone in, in Village Hall would be able to just look up what we're dealing with in any particular parcel. And that takes a tremendous amount of work that cannot be completed by the current staff because the current staff is trying to stay on top of existing, the work that needs to be done day to day. I do not, Ken does not anticipate this to take more than 100 total hours. They would be paid $25 an hour and so that would be a $2,500 expense. So we can have a conversation about that first, or I can explain part two, and then we can have a conversation about all of it, whatever you'd prefer. Okay, I'll explain the secretary as well. So, um, for the last couple of years, we've had a subcontractor doing the minutes for both the planning board and the zoning board of appeals. That subcontractor asked to be replaced due to personal concerns last summer and we have identified a new person. I, I raised this in our meeting last month. She has requested however, not to be a subcontractor. She's requested to be a part-time person. And so there is a position available in civil service called the secretary to the planning board and the zoning board of appeals. It is an exempt position that is typically part-time. We would like, I, I, Ken and I would very much like her to start with the meeting minutes, but also help with this digitization and, and just generalized record keeping process. My goal is to have the planning board, the planning, building and zoning office be fully digital by the end of the calendar year, which means that the current two offices that are filled with paper, you won't see a piece of paper anywhere. And, and we have really good software. We have Municity. We have Laserfish and they work together. And now we just need to start using it. And so, so, oh, and the secretary would be hired at $16.50 an hour. And hopefully, and, and there she would be. So those are the.
And the two contractors would be at $25 an hour.
$25 an hour, yeah.
Or a maximum of, for approximately 100 hours, correct?
Approximately 100 hours, yep.
Yes.
And so between the two of them, it would be less than $10,000 this year. We have more than that in our current budget that is not going to be spent on other personnel.
Oh, Rick, you're muted.
Sorry. I'm trying to be a good citizen and turn it off when I'm not on, right? You said the two part-timers would be preparing the documents for digitization. Then they go out to a third party who then actually does it as, and then maintenance. So is there some, I wasn't clear, is there some downstream cost to the actual digitization for all of this stuff?
Yes, and I realized it as I was preparing the email to you all three days ago and then I, and then it fell out of my head. Yes, there will be, and I need to get a quote on that.
It's similar to what we, I'm sorry, Lydia, can I jump in here? It's, we've digitized a lot of our meeting minutes before and send them out to a subcontractor, all thousands of documents. Yeah, so, and that was all using the same similar format. We are prepared, as Lydia mentioned, to use Laserfish. The goal, we will probably have to buy a couple pieces of equipment, which is a small monetary expense to help facilitate this. But these two people that Lydia is proposing are, have been doing this in other municipalities and they are well versed in how to get it done, who to get it done and, and to help us move it along, move it along quickly.
And how it has been explained to me, and this makes sense, is that sending it out to be scanned takes much less money than it would take to have the people that you're paying an hourly wage do it themselves. So.
Yeah, ongoing day to day.
Yeah, ongoing day to day.
Training to actually do it as part of their habitual day-to-day tasks, right? So we won't get a big backlog like this.
Exactly.
Vanessa, eventually Martina will have on her desk, Chrissy will have one on her desk, Chrissy and Karen will have one on her desk. And everybody in Village Hall will be using this format and this system to upload data to the parcel by parcel. So we would have a complete record, water bills, wastewater bills, taxes, permitting, the whole nine yards here. And everybody would be using it. And that's how, and this is how other municipalities are doing it.
Yep.
I, I'm, I'm like super excited. I'm going to tell, and thank you, Lydia, for driving this. I have been waiting so long to get to a position where we can do this and get this office digitized and work with getting Village Hall even further digitized. So I am just, I'm 100% behind this. I'm going to tell you right now.
Um.
How far back?
I mean, as far, we go back as far as we need to. I mean, I, I, well, this is actually part of the conversation, right, of how far back do we need to go? But ideally, you know, there is a complete record for each parcel in the village that is digitized. You know, obviously the first priority is everything that you see in the offices. We're not going to go digging into our archives in this first sweep. But, you know, I, I, I will, I will do a little more digging on that.
Yeah, I think we should just work on getting caught up with what we have on our desks.
Of course, of course, of course.
And then worry about what we already have archived.
Yeah, but the, the goal is to have these two people train current staff, including the secretary position that we're creating in how to do all of this. And, uh, yes. Sorry, I just saw a comment in the chat. So yes, this will, this will be here moving forward.
The comment in the chat was, are we going to accept other, other candidates for these positions? And to address the two people that are coming from another municipality, they are trained individuals on this process. So my answer would be no, we would not accept additional people for that capacity. And we already have a working subcontractor on the minutes that is capable to, to do this. So it's not like we're hiring additional people.
Right, but I mean, to be, to be clear, this is, we're creating it right now in this fiscal year as a temporary position. If we do choose to make it a permanent position, we will, we will open it up to, to more candidates. Because we will, that's, that's what's appropriate.
Just to remind everybody, the planning board and zoning board appeals has by code approved line item and approved budget line item for the secretarial position. So there's already money budgeted for that. It's not a new, my point is it's not a new line item.
Yeah, none of this is new expense.
So if you go back to 2017, we had half of John Fenton and we had a full-timer and we were at 80,000 a year. So we're, if you take the two or three percent bumps, if we're still, if we're still under the 83 grand that you said, or whatever.
I mean, if we had kept a full-time clerk, in addition to John Fenton, we would be over $90,000 for these two offices at this point. I mean, for this one office or the three offices together at this point. And we're still only at, you know, 80, just shy of $84,000 is the current, is the current budget for these three offices.
That's, that's the way I look at it.
Yeah, and like, you know, we've, we've, we've done so far very efficiently for the last sort of few years. And I think that efficiency is beginning to show itself for, for what it is. And that I think we have, we now have an opportunity to do some good work here and I'd like to take advantage of it.
All right, Joanna, you have a. Want to make a motion, Lydia?
Oh, I, I'd like to make a motion to approve these three part-time positions.
I'm going to second it.
Joanne seems to have a question. Should we take it?
Sure.
Joanne?
Hi, I think it's a great idea. I'm glad you're doing it. I just want to ensure that we've had so much growth in the last few years. And I think it's important, especially important with the upcoming comprehensive plan, that we have visible and understand the building permits, what's been going on in the last few years. I mean, we look at the 1993 and the statistics go all off. That's why we're doing a new one. And I think the recent few years' information is imperative to go ahead with the, the comprehensive plan. I hope you agree.
Yeah, I mean, this is part of the work, Joanne, is that we need to be able to reach, access this information with ease. And at the moment, we, we can't. And so this is very, I mean, the comprehensive plan is happening at the same time. But this is, this is all part of the reason why. It's not just the comprehensive plan committee that needs this information. So yes, I, I fully agree with you. We're going to do our best to make, yeah.
That's a really good point, Joanne.
Go ahead.
And just going to say, that's a really good point. It makes me think that in addition to scanning in the documents, are we entering them into some kind of, you know, into some kind of form to capture the data? So that we're not going to just be scrolling through pages and pages of documents, but we actually have a database where we can actually get usable data.
Yeah, so that's what Laserfish is. That's what Municity is. Okay, well, yeah, it's both.
Laserfish is a repository. And the repository gets structured and formatted almost as like you could structure a drive. So we can set that up. And the comment I was going to make is, we're thankful to have Ken McLaughlin. He knows this system like the back of his hand and he knows how to structure it in a way that makes it useful for everybody. And so he's really leading, helping us to lead the charge and bringing in these other two experts to help get us going.
But, but yes, Vanessa, to answer your question, the, the, the point of this whole thing is to have, you know, and, and a database where we can pull reports.
Okay, great.
That's, yeah. Okay.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second. I'm going to call for a vote by raise a hand and saying aye. All in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Done, Lydia.
Oh, thank you. Thank you all. And Joanne, I'm fully aware of your concerns about the budget, as am I. We will make sure to keep our eyes on this moving forward as we head into budget season.
Okay, moving on. Adding a sensory safe space to our Village of Rhinebeck event application. All of you are aware of the work that the Autism Supportive Committee has been doing. I sent you a note that outlines the changes to the event application in terms of desire to not only just support those with autism, but a sensory space, safe space that affords all individuals an opportunity to step away from overwhelming sensory experiences. And whenever possible, a sensory safe space should be easily accessible and provide a view of the event in the Village of Rhinebeck. And this space will be staffed by the trained personnel provided by the Autism Supportive Committee. We've, as I mentioned in my email to everybody, we've piloted this now on several medium, small and large events. And it's been very successful. In some cases, we've had the opportunity for people to do it that have never had the opportunity to attend events in the Village of Rhinebeck before. So it, it's kind of heartwarming a little bit that we're trying to help those with disabilities be able to partake in, in these events. So I've added to the event application, a designated sensory safe space for when we're having public gatherings on, for those events. In addition, in reviewing this with part of the, our emergency personnel Sergeant Dunn and Chief Kyle Amy, they suggested that we also modify Statement Nine and Statement Ten because of the requirement for submitting permits. And that was also disclosed to you all. And event that if we're redirecting or closure of state road involved, that it's 90 days prior to the mass gathering. Rather than having all events be at 180 days, right? We can shorten some up and direct 180 date if it is a road closure and 90 days if it's not a road closure, excuse me, for that interpretation. And then 60 days for, in number 10, instead of 120 days for 60 days for the mass gathering permit, which goes along the lines with everything we've been doing in the past and it helps streamline our operations and gets the process going. And they've, they've agreed to that. So I'd like to make a motion to accept the designated sensory safe space and the permitting requiring days to our Village of Rhinebeck event application. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Vanessa. All right, discussion?
Is the sensory space mandatory and is there a threshold that has to be met?
So when you have a mass gathering, like I talked, mass gatherings, we're not, we're saying, we are asking them to provide a space somewhere in the village.
What's the definition of mass gathering?
Parade, whether it's a parade or cinderclaws or porch fest, as an example, we did it as well. We're asking for that organizer to designate a sensory safe space, yes. We're asking for that organizer to designate a sensory safe space, yes.
No, the question is, but what's the definition of a mass gathering?
It's a, it's an event of over 5,000 attendees.
5,000, okay.
Yeah, but we're saying, separate that, Rick, because we're saying we want it even for the holiday parade. We're not gonna have 5,000 people for the holiday parade. We want it for, if we have Porch Fest, maybe there's gonna be more than 5,000, but if that ever happens again, as an example, to does have a designated sensory safe space. Not just mass gatherings, it's public gatherings, as I listed on the event application.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just a little, I'm a little confused by who, what's the threshold for people to create the sensory space? That's, that's a little confusing to me.
We have an event that involves a public gathering that is, as I said in this definition, provides an over, there's an overwhelming sensory experience. We are asking them to do that. So if we have a fire truck parade going down Village, going down Market Street, we would ask for it. Cause fire trucks are loud and, and-
I, 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 no, I, I, I understand that. I just feel like the rules should be clear to the people who are applying.
We're asking for a sensory safe space if they're having a public gathering. All public gatherings, we're asking for a sensory safe space.
I'll, I'll give you an example, cause I have an event, I just filled out the event form for, we're gonna do an amphibians migration event. And one of the, one of the places is right on the village border, right by the elementary school. And I wasn't, I'm not planning to have a sensory safe space for that type of an event. And it would be, but it would be up to me, I guess, to determine whether that's going to-
Vanessa, it will, yeah, it will be, because in your case, you're doing it on an open road and there's no place for people to escape. So in your event application, you would say, listen, I can't, I'm in an open road. I don't have a place for people to step away from this experience. Right?
Yeah.
And Joanne, Joanne Galb asked a question, excuse me, Joanne Galb asked a question, will accept the, will this impact the farmer's market? Joanne, the, the farmer's market is not an event. It's a sanctioned thing. So, no.
So, so is the idea with the farmer, like with, you know, Joanne's, just out of, for example, with Joanne's question on the farmer's market, is, is this because, you know, someone who's having a, a moment, um, could step away from the farmer's market?
Yeah, they have, yes.
Okay, so with like Vanessa's thing with the amphibians crossing the street, I mean, couldn't they just step into their car or, um, you know, just sort of step away from the, is, is the concern that just, you know, walking for 20 feet or half a block, i- if that's, you know, not enough, or?
Right, like if you're in a crush of people and you-
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
That, yeah, that, that I fully appreciate. I mean, something like Cinderclaws, I fully appreciate it, but, um, okay, so if the idea is that like, there's kind of nowhere to escape in, in the particular moment, then we need a sensory safe space, which makes sense. But if there's, if it's a smaller event, that's not as raucous, and, and it's easy to step away from it, then in that case, we, we, we won't require this. Is that kind of the idea behind this?
That's kind of the idea behind it, right?
Yeah, I get that.
What's the language exactly for the condition, under which this would apply?
That's, that's the issue.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I don't understand your question.
Well, there's gotta be a definition of when this condition would apply.
That, that's the issue.
Or just the language that defines when this condition would apply. Or if, if it, it's, if it is reasonably determined by the village board or something like that, you know what I mean, like?
Well, I don't know, I tried to define it and I sent it all out. None of you had a question before, so I find this interesting, but that's okay. Because it really is an issue, it really is an issue where, you know, there is a, it's not just the gathering of people, it's the sensory conditions that are being created. And if you have those sensory conditions that can impact an individual and they need to step away, and that's lights, sirens, loud noises, those kind of activities, you need, we're, we're asking for people to create a space where they, where they can escape to.
So I-
And yet, and yet, and yet, still-
Participate in an event.
And still participate in the event, right? I, I, I think that's where I, I think that's where I get a little confused, cause I don't know if watching, you know, an overwhelming parade, like Cinderclaws, if it's even possible to have a sensory safe space from that, where you can still, I mean-
Yeah, we did.
We did, okay.
Yeah, we absolutely did. We, and we held it in the Beakman Arms.
Okay, so they could just sort of look out the window?
Yeah, so we were able, you know, the Beakman Arms designated the part of the library, the one room in the corner. And that was our sensory safe space and it was used.
I, I, I think, I think this is a terrific idea, um, but I wanna follow up on what Brent is saying is that I think we need to give the applicants some guidance as to when this clause is, when, when, when this clause will be enforced and when it's not. I mean, should it be, you gave, Gary gave a definition of events with, you know, high sensory stimuli or certain numbers of people. You know, I feel like that should be incorporated into there should, the threshold or the language. So people should know, hey, okay, my little event, not necessary, but when I reach a certain level or a certain amount of activity, then yes, then, then I, then I need to-
Like, yeah, that's nice.
I wanted to table it and to go back and get that.
Yeah, I-
Wish y'all would've reached out to me before, so I could've had these answers for you. Rather than not responding, but that's okay.
I thought we were gonna discuss it at the meeting.
All right, so I'm, I'm gonna table this and I'll come back with better language for you all on when this applies.
Okay.
Moving on. Rick?
Okay, so, um, uh, as, as many people have noticed, Central Hudson's been out replacing, uh, the electric poles all around the village. And, uh, when they do that, they, uh, frequently cite the new pole next to an old pole, put up their new pole, move their wires over to the new pole and then cut off the top of that, the old pole and leave all the rest. Um, and that's one issue unto it, unto itself. We have an issue where at the intersection of South Street and South Parshion Street, we have the blinking light. And that blinking light is attached on the southwest corner to a Central Hudson pole and on the northeast corner to essentially an orphan pole. So Central Hudson has come by, they've put up a new pole on the southwest corner and basically they, um, strapped our control box for the blinking light and left the wiring sort of higgledy piggledy and, um, not in good shape. So we need to move the control box and the, um, the equipment for hanging the light from the old pole onto the new Central Hudson pole. And at the same time, on the northeast corner, there's this orphan pole, which is undersized and literally is tied with rope at the top to the main Central Hudson pole. I guess, cause the traffic light's been pulling it over, so don't know when somebody put that rope up. So, um, what we'd like to do is, uh, move the traffic light to the new poles, get rid of the orphan pole. This kind of work is specialized for electricians. They have to be, uh, 600 volt rated, basically. They have to be certified to work among power lines. I called a fair number of electricians and a fair number of people. I was able to get two bids. One from, uh, Veith Electric and the other one from, um, Jeff Finkel, who's out in Stanfordville. Um, so Jeff and I were actually, went over, we took a look at the, um, uh, we took a look at the thing, we discussed what needed to be done. And, uh, he submitted a bid, which I think we should accept it, is to relocate the, the light and install the new guy strand in locations. Replace the wiring, which is quite old, um, to the control panel, uh, put the control panel on the new pole, ground the control panel and then remove the pole on the, uh, northeast corner and put some item four in there. Um, and he submitted a bid for, uh, $5,200. That was less than the bike bid, which actually was for a bit less work. So I'd like to make a motion to accept a bid from, uh, Jeff Finkel, Stanford Line Construction Incorporated for $5,200 to do the work that I outlined.
I'll second.
Next, yeah. Where would the money come from, Rick? Is it in your budget?
Yeah, it's streets, we'll call it, it's streets.
Okay, great.
Can you wait to change the light to an LED while we're up there?
We, um, we, we talked about it and we're gonna look at it. Uh, I had Jeff looking into, uh, the cost of the LED. The central issue that we have is that light consumes some, but not a lot of electricity. And so the question is, is the cost of the LED worth the price of the electricity? And that's an answer that we'll have to develop on the fly. But yes, we definitely talked about, there's sockets in there, unscrewing the bulbs, putting in LEDs.
Okay.
And we keep the old fixtures.
And you, I think you did mention you're gonna remove the pole, right?
Correct, that the, the pole on the northeast corner, the one on the southwest corner still has, uh, telecommunications stuff on it.
I thought they said they could move that telecommunications line.
Potentially, yes. But potentially, yes.
So potentially, we can move both, remove both those poles.
Correct, correct. We have to find out if that's possible. Um, and somebody asked about the orphan pole at, um, uh, the corner of Center and Livingston and- Excuse, excuse me?
Never mind.
Yeah, so I don't mean to pick on orphans. Um, uh, yes, I talked to Jeff about while he's here, getting that done as well. And he was gonna give me a, a little, a separate little bid to, for that, while, while he's mobilized to get rid of that pole.
I think everybody, everybody needs to understand here, what happens is when Central Hudson puts in these new poles, they, they are not allowed to remove, to move the, 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 uh, frontier cables, they're not allowed to move the spectrum cables or any telecommunications cables. And so they just put in a new pole and then they don't contract with the other providers to remove there. So we end up with all these other secondary poles in place, these dead poles in place and waiting for the cable company to come back and move them. And that's why we're left all over the village with these, you know, semi-abandoned poles, because there's no communication between the utility company and the telecommunications company to coordinate that work. I've submitted a complaint to the utility company for doing that. Um, so that's about as far as it went. I submitted my complaint.
Well, I, I, I had, we have a new rep at Central Hudson who I discussed this with. And in, from there, from, from Central Hudson's point of view is, yes, we send out a list of all the poles that we've replaced and cut and then the, and then the, and then the, uh, tele- telecommunications companies don't do anything. So there's a lot of, um, finger pointing. And for the telecommunications companies, it's just an extra expense, um, which they don't wanna take on. And so they're just really slow to do it. Um, and we don't have a lot of leverage.
And if we don't do this, Rick, we could be the last ones holding the cable onto the pole. And then it becomes our expense. So if the cable company shows up tomorrow and moves their stuff, it's, it's now on us because we're tied to the pole.
Right, so, no, we definitely can get it done. And I think it's also important to, we, we ourselves have a double pole on the, uh, northeast corner and we can get rid of that one ourselves. That's our pole that we can get rid of.
Sort of like mind boggling, but it's, this is just kind of how it works. Um, uh, do we have any kind, do we have any rep at Spectrum or, or Frontier who we can talk to and say, and ask them if there's a timeline on doing this? I mean, do, do they care? Like, I mean, obviously we care, but is this something that they, they? I mean, theoretically, Central Hudson is swapping the poles because the old one is falling apart in some way. And so I would imagine that Frontier slash Spectrum would care about that. These are all just a bunch of really rhetorical questions that none of us know the answer to. Um-
I, 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 I talked to some other folks. This is, I've not reached out to any of the telecommunications companies. Um, but I've talked to other, some other people in other municipalities who've tried and they said they're beating their head against a wall. But this doesn't mean we can't try. I know, Gary, you were talking to, to Spectrum about some of the service issues, so.
Yeah, yes.
There, there are monopoly, there are monopolies without any particular incentive to do anything.
Well, that's why it's important in our, in our small wireless facility piece that we, you know, do put in the, the language there for abandonment.
We have self-help remedies if-
Yes.
Right.
They leave stuff or they're dead beats.
Yep.
Yeah.
Is there any way that we can, is there any way we can have that kind of agreement with the telecommunications companies or not?
Let's find our original, uh, license agreement. I wonder-
I got it, is that that 80-page PDF that was scanned from, yeah, 1952 or something?
Probably.
Great, okay.
But first, first that, first this and then we'll worry about the rest.
Sorry, back to the point, point of interest.
Back to the, back to the flasher.
Yeah, so thank, I asked Rick to take on this project because this has been a problem for a long time.
So the only thing is, I got, I heard good word about the Veith signal box guy. Just thought I would mention that.
Yeah, they, they, you know what, they all know one another. They all work together.
Well, my tenant knew him, so that's, remember I called you about this?
Yeah, no, I, I had a great conversation with Veith. They came in a little bit more, they came, they came in a little bit more expensive. Jeff works with Veith. I asked him about something and he goes, yeah, I'm probably gonna talk to, you know, actually source this part through them. So he does good work. Um, he's been, he's locally, he's been in there for a long time.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
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 So Rick, you'll follow up and get this done?
Yep, thank you.
Okay, Martina, are you still with us?
I am.
You wanna talk about the farmer's market community table, please?
Yes, so in the past, the farmer's market had allowed, uh, for the village to have a community table in which people would sign up each weekend for uh, essentially non-for-profit types of things. So we're kind of proposing bringing that back. I did speak with Andrea Barhalameo, who runs the farmer's market. She's in agreement that we can and should bring that back. Her only concern was that we don't call it the farmer's market community table, cause they kind of have their own separate, uh, table, it, for the same thing. So she asked that we call it something along the lines of the village community table. Um, and it would have some guidelines, like you can't sign up for two weekends in a row unless nobody else wants it. It would not be for selling anything, it would be, it's designed for non-for-profits. But that's essentially it.
And, and gatherings, you know, you know, musical events, of large gatherings at the table either would not be permitted.
That would not be permitted as well. That would kind of fall under an event in which you would need a separate event application.
Same table, new name.
This is really interesting, actually, cause the comp plan committee wanted to do something with the farmer's market to sort of share information with people who are attending the farmer's market and give people opportunities to engage in the process. So.
They could sign up for the community table.
They could sign up for the community table.
So originally, we had to cancel this because the market had to expand out because of the pandemic. And now they're collapsing back in, so the room is gonna be a bit, the spaces are gonna be available now again. To use. And, and also at one time, you know, there's been two processes. One is, everything had to come forward to the board to be approved. And then at one time, we changed that a while back and said, it's up to the village clerk. The village clerk can take the applications if there's room, vet them out and just automatically do it. So we're not dealing with the continuous and are waiting 30 days for people to apply. So I'd like to add to that to Martina's suggestion of bringing this back, is that we give the village clerk, uh, the authority to assign and schedule.
Yes.
Great.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
To your post, moving forward. All right, Martina.
Do you have a second for that?
Oh, I thought we did.
Okay, one second. Okay.
Okay.
Keep, keep going, Martina.
Moving on, the 2022 village election is scheduled for March 15th. Polling hours are from noon until 9:00 PM. I have reached out and selected election inspectors that I am requesting that the board approve. I have Lauren Belvin of 29 Beach Street, Joyce Meyer of 12 Crossmore Road, Gina Fox of Nine Manor Road, and Elizabeth Zurov of 15 Crossmore Road.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the election inspectors as listed by our village clerk.
Second.
Any discussion?
Thank you, Martina.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's all approved. All right. Keep going, Martina. Special requests.
Give me one second. I'm writing. Okay, so moving on to special requests, the first one I have, it's for another blood drive at the village hall. It would still be done by the Red Cross, but it would be hosted by one of the oncology nurses from Northern Duchess. She is requesting Saturday, March 12th, from 8:30 AM until 3:00 PM upstairs at the village hall. I believe this would still require a signup like it did for the last one. I will have to double check with her, but more than likely, yes, in which they had up to, I believe, 30 or 50 signups. Yes, she would be eager to come back and host another blood drive at the village hall.
Great.
Good.
We need blood.
I make a motion to approve, I make a motion to approve the blood drive at village hall. Anybody have a second? Thank you, Rick. Any other discussion?
Martina, is that date okay with the village election so soon after?
Yes. That would not interfere. The Red Cross is actually very good about bringing all of their required setup. And they tore everything down and left everything very clean. And that is scheduled for a Saturday and our cleaner could come Sunday and clean the room.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, she seconded?
Rick.
Rick did.
Thank you. Okay.
You can skip the next one to the, for the Democrat committee table because that's part of the, now the community table, correct?
Yes and no. So it was presented as its own application for them to set up a table by the Doughboy each weekend from May 8th until November 6th. So it still needs to be presented for the board for approval. But now that you have just approved the community table, that is up to you to either allow them to set up their separate table by the Doughboy or ask that they sign up through the community table, which will not be set yet until I get dates for the farmer's market.
So part of the, part of the pandemic, wasn't the Democratic Committee table in the parking lot sort of near the vendors? And then we pulled them out of the parking lot because the farmer's market needed extra space for its vendors and put them by the Doughboy?
It was a community table.
Oh, it was a community table. Got it. Okay.
Can I say something? Joanne Gell here.
Sure, Joanne, go ahead.
Unless the, the farmer's market has changed their laws, they, they've never allowed anything political inside the market, which is why the Democrats set up in the parking lot. It, it's been going on for years. And I don't know, this community table thing, it has always been managed by the market. We would get nonprofit to comply. So it sounds like you guys are taking that over now. But I would check with them whether that would.
There's actually separate community tables. The Rhinebeck Farmer's Market has their own community table and they may not allow the Democratic Committee, but the village community table would.
And the village community table has always been on the western end of, of that middle section of the municipal lot.
Outside of the farmer's market.
Outside of the farmer's market because the farmer's market, we could register people as much as we want to, to vote. But we could never have a political party. But just ask, you might want to just check with their board. Thanks.
This request is to be outside by the Doughboy though, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Every weekend.
Specific one, yes, because that's what they did last year. Since there was no community table, they asked for a separate table by the Doughboy.
Well, there's a precedent though.
But just, but just to be clear, in the past, they did not have an event application. They used the community table at the farmer's market.
But it sounds like we just said for the community table at the farmer's market that we're not going to allow, you know, back to back to back dates. And it, the Democratic Committee is asking for week over week over week. So I, I don't know if, if, if what they're hoping to achieve can be achieved by putting them at the community table.
Right. Doesn't sound like it.
Yeah, it doesn't sound like it.
But if they're asking.
Being by the Doughboy. I think that they prefer being by the Doughboy because of the location.
Yeah, you get people who don't go into the farmer's market.
I'm going to say, I'm just, when we started the, when we started the community table, we agreed that you could only get it twice a month at the maximum because it's, we didn't want people hogging it. And I feel like essentially, if we're going to make this space at the Doughboy, then we might want to have the same rules because effectively, we're now making essentially another public space that's open. And now if we do this, it's going to become a contest for who's going to get there first. Who's going to, you know, somebody going to, somebody going to ice out somebody else, you know, or it, I feel like if we're creating another community space, then we probably should have the same rules or similar rules. But I feel like basically, we're recreating the community table. We should, we should look at it that way.
I personally think there should only be one community table. And we don't want it, because if we start opening up the event for, at the Doughboy, how, you know, somebody else is going to ask for the other side of the Doughboy or behind the Doughboy or in front of the Doughboy and.
So why do we, why did we allow that last year? Was it because of the?
It was only because of the pandemic. We didn't have the community.
Okay.
Yeah. I, I think we should keep, I think we should keep this, the community table.
And I think the rules should apply. You, I mean, if nobody wants it and nobody's using it, why let it go empty? But if, you, you can't hog the top all the time and be guaranteed it if somebody else goes in and says, wants that date.
Right. But I, I just, it strikes me as, as an overly intensive use for the Doughboy space.
I agree. I don't think that's the place for it.
So just ask them to come back with something else?
Or to go to the community table?
Yeah.
We can't give it to them every week.
My, my request is to ask them to go re, come back to the community table as well.
Okay. Second.
I can all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, so Martina, you got it.
Yes, thank you. This last special request actually comes from Vanessa, if you'd like to present that.
Oh, yes. As I already mentioned, we're going to be doing our second annual amphibian migration event. It's called a big night in the spring. When you have a warm enough evening, that's rainy, that's when all the little critters, salamanders, peepers, frogs, they come out of their woodland hibernation and they migrate to the vernal pools for breeding. And a lot of those vernal pools happen to be across the road. And then all these little guys get squished. And, and these are terribly important tiny creatures for our ecosystem. So the Hudson River SUI program sponsors a whole big night event across the area. It's a night where citizen scientists, scientists can come out and not only help the little guys cross the road, but also submit how many and what types of species you saw that evening. And then all of that is compiled by the DEC to better get a handle on populations of these species, some of which are quite threatened. So this will be a climate smart task force collaboration with this year, the Winnicke Land Trust. And so we'll have three locations. As I mentioned before, one up by Chancellor Livingston School, then one up by Ferncliff Forest. And then the third will be at the new Winnicke Land Trust preserved area, the Fly Marsh. Well, so the tricky part about this event is that it's, it's kind of climate and weather dependent. So most likely, it will be sometime between mid-March to mid-April. And so my event request is a little unorthodox in that way. But I am also requesting assistance from the police department because as we know, Mount Rutson Road is a real pretty, you know, speedily trafficked cut through up to the Kingston Bridge. So we want to close Mount Rutson Road just for the period of the event, which would be approximately 7:00 to 9:00 PM on, on an evening. So this is my event request. It is a really fun event. I encourage all of you to get involved. And you can find out more information about it on the Climate Smart website. So I'd like to make a motion that you accept my event application.
Second.
That's good. Second. Vanessa. I think this last time, the village police were, helped you on, on Mount Rutson. And you got those great photographs. It was really beautiful.
Yeah.
What are you doing up by Fly Road?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just requesting the police this year to help us on Mount Rutson. Because my, my understanding is that Fly Road is not as frequently trafficked. You know, we will still have, we're going to put up those signs again that say, you know, caution volunteers in the road. And I'm going to ask the highway department as well as borrow some traffic cones to slow down any traffic that is going through. And volunteers all wear safety vests and headlamps and flashlights. You know, safety, safety precautions will be in order. But I think for this year, we just want to try closing Mount Rutson and, and seeing how that goes.
Okay, I'm just, I'm serious.
Just for clarity, the, this is not a village road. This is a, obviously a town road. So the town has been asked for permission to do this, correct, Vanessa? And they've, they've agreed and they've also agreed to split the cost of the coverage for the police department.
Yeah. The next step, if, if this is approved tonight, will be just to have a, a meeting with the town highway supervisor superintendent, Bob Lyon.
But you made a motion. Did anybody second it? Vanessa, I forget.
Yes, Lydia.
Lydia, okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 I guess I'll abstain. I don't know. Do I vote?
Yeah, you can vote.
Okay, aye.
Yeah. All right, see unanimous. Very good. Thank you. All right. So moving on, minutes approval. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from January 11th, 2022. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Vanessa. Any discussion?
I didn't read them. So I didn't read them yet, so I'm going to abstain.
Okay, trustee Lewis abstaining. Everybody else, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so everybody else is approved. Treasurers' report, Karen.
Okay, the Treasurers' report is for the period ending January 31st. The general fund ended the month with 210,392.05. The water fund ended the month with 236,999.83. And the sewer fund ended the month with 610,648.97. Vouchers presented for payment in the general fund total 95,908.32. In the water fund, 36,779.84. And in the sewer fund, 33,159.32. There was one bill for the water system upgrade grant for 56.98. And the bond for the police land, we made our last payment for principal and interest of $40,520. An operating statement is provided for the revenue and expenditures through February 8th. And the water and suit, water and wastewater billing and adjustments, as signed off by trustee Nunaker, are presented for authorization.
I'd like to present them, the changes as presented, the, to get a motion to approve the changes as presented.
Second. Second.
Okay, accounting services, I request.
Wait, wait, do we need to vote on that?
Yeah, we should vote. Yeah, sorry.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Accounting services, I request a resolution to use RBT CPAs for accounting services, assistance with the year-end close and the annual financial report, as well as using Lori Doty CPA for the court audit.
I make a motion to accept RB2 and Lori's $850 bid for the court audit.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I have a couple of budget amendments. One is just to allocate the center clause donation to the center clause line item. The other is to allocate the police grant to the two police expense items that, that those were charged to. And then the third is in the sewer fund to decrease the sewer engineer by 2,500 and increase the sewer administrative fees, non-employees. Those are my budget amendments.
I make a motion to accept the budget amendments as proposed by the treasurer.
Second.
Thank you, Lydia. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
So approved.
Okay. And, and lastly, I just want to report that the budget 2022-23 season is here. On February 22nd, the department budgets will be the highway and the police. March 1st will be water and sewer. March 22nd will be environmental, fire and general. And then March 29th will be a review of the total budget. And if all goes well through March, on April 12th, will be the public hearing at the regular board meeting.
Thank you, Karen.
That's all I have.
All right, department reports. First one is the police. I'll read the January monthly summary, total number of incidents in the. Total number of incidents in the town was 15. Total number of incidents in the village, 75. Total number of tickets in the town were six. Total number of tickets in the village, 39. Total arrests were three and total number of actions were four. There was no additional coverage by the police during the month of January. And for, you can refer to the attachments for a detailed review. Lydia, do we have a building plan in the zoning update?
We do not.
Okay.
Yeah, I apologize for that. Yeah, we'll get it.
All right, Rick, highway department.
Okay, a couple, couple quick items. So the search for the highway DPW is on. We so far have a dozen applicants and I will be distributing.
I gotta stop you, it's not a highway department DPW.
I'm sorry, I spoke to wrong. It's superintendent. Excuse me, superintendent public works. And we have dozen applications at this point, and I will be distributing those applications to my two other committee members. The search is still open for another 11 days. So that was number one, the highway department has been pretty busy in the last month. It was out grinding stumps before all the snow came flying, picking up Christmas trees. There was a lot of, obviously plowing, salting and road cleanup. They actually, they've been up cold patching. And I did have a question from somebody, right now, the asphalt plants are cold, are cold, are closed. So when we patch poples, basically we're just using a temporary material called cold patch. So it fills the, it fills the, fills the hole, but it's only a temporary fix and you'll see that it, it's going to scatter. They did some repairing of the trucks, obviously rotated the speed sign on Noelwood Road. They hung a hose. They did clean up some private sidewalks, which had not been cleaned up by the owners. They picked up Christmas trees, last pickup, last Christmas tree pickup was the 28th. Tom took down the holiday decorations. And I just want to point out one thing that this winter is a hellacious winter for roads. We've basically had a series of deep freeze thaw cycles. Basically, the, the water penetrates into the pavement or gets into cracks, it freezes, the cracks expand. And then this year, we've had a thaw, the water penetrates further, and then we had a freeze and expands further. So roads, I, I look around, I see roads are in tough shape. We're going to have a, a tough spring, I think. And a lot of municipalities are going to have a tough spring because we've had such a difficult winter, real, real difficult winter for the roads. That's it. That's it.
You have an item here for Crystal Lake, Rick.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, that I read, that was the next one. So one of the things, I've been working with the tree commission and we've been doing some plantings down at Crystal Lake Park and looking at other landscape plans and such. And along the way, what I realized is I've had people come up to me and say, hey, what are we doing there? And what I realized is we don't really have much, we don't have a plan. And what I'd really like to do is solicit ideas from the villagers. I'd like to put out a little survey, what people would like to see down at Crystal Lake. I'd like to use the resources of the village to use our mailing list to get that out. I'd like to encourage people to email, send, send in information, essentially compile, like to compile that information. And then maybe, if it warrants it, putting together a little group to say, what's going to be the, what, what's the desired future for Crystal Lake? Basically, it's a beautiful little park. Some days you go there, it's quite, quite well used. Other days you go there, it's pretty quiet. So this would really be a chance for people to have villagers to have a chance to have their input about what they'd like to see down there. And then we could start to look at a plan as to what we'd like to do. So just want to bring that force to the board. I would be using some village resources, obviously the mailing list and such like that, to get out the word and doing some other campaign to get that stuff out there. It strikes me, as I said, this seems to be a need as I've been working around these issues that, that, that seems to, that needs addressing. So I'd like to see that part dressed up. This is not include the mini park. This is only for the Crystal Lake Park.
That sounds like a great idea.
Thank you.
Do you need more than that?
Well, it's just as long as it's okay, the okay to use the village resources is really.
Yeah, why not? That's what it's for.
Yeah. It's the only way that, without a local newspaper, it's the only way we can communicate with people these days. Super frustrating.
I'll be putting that together for next week, so.
Rick, are you thinking that people would just kind of describe open, like in an open field? Or are you going to have multiple choice or?
I, you know, I, I've been, I've been thinking about this. I think what I, what I'd like to ask is what their current usage pattern is. Some of the things that I'd like to see, but I would like to encourage open-ended question, open-ended answers. So that people can say, wow, you know, I'd, I'd love to see more of a picnic area or I'd like to see the Veterans Memorial cleaned up, or I think we need more parking, or we should have a bridge over the, over the Asher Dam. I'd like to really hear what people want. I realize it's important in a survey to do a bit of both. But I'd like to be at this time more open-ended than closed-ended. So that's, that's my thinking at the moment.
So when's your plan? What's your date timeline?
Well, I'd like to put together the, the survey using the Microsoft forms like we did with the, the police survey. And that'll probably take me about a week to get all the questions down or really think about it. We can push it out at, you know, starting sometime after that. And, you know, I'd like to just get moving from there.
So you want the, the board to approve your survey or you want to just have carte blanche here?
Well, what do you guys want? Do you want to look it over or are you willing to let me write it?
Just so you can do it.
Okay.
I mean.
Yeah, really, feel free, Rick.
Okay. You got it. So I just, I really just wanted to, to alert you and, 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 and have you, have you done, we're doing that direction. Because I just, this is a wonderful resource that we have in the village and it seems underutilized.
Okay, thank you.
That's it.
Grant, water and wastewater.
Not, not much with water. We had frazzled ice in very bitter cold temperature, which is when the intake gets kind of a sub, sub, you know, below the surface water freezing. But when they turned the pumps on, it was okay in the morning. There was a six inch water main repair in Ryan Cliff. You know, no doubt the freezing and thawing kind of thing. So normal operations for water. With wastewater, they treated 3.4 million gallons waste. That's a lot. And that could synthesize to 4,682 pounds of sludge in January. Just thought I would point that out. We had the tech of, from P W Tech come to try to improve the solids in the screw press so we can improve on avoiding surcharges. Because our sludge is a little too wet, so we're, we're working on that. Now we're, we have a composting contract. The highway guys fixed the water line outside the filter building. Well, they dug the hole to fix the water line outside the filter building. Brian Bacamo and, and the other Brian worked on the fitting and stuff. It actually started leaking again, so they had to do it twice, but with wastewater, wanted to talk about the timeline for the, something I brought up a couple months ago is that we got from, from the E F C, a zero interest loan on all the proposed improvements we had in our engineering report for the wastewater treatment plant. I had a meeting with Karen and Delaware Engineering and Brian Bacamo to, to try to gather what the scope of the project could look like. And so Delaware is going to come back with like kind of prices on things. From what I understand, when you go out to bid now, that you can expect maybe 25% more of an expense than a couple of years, from a couple of years ago. They put together a timeline, so they would, I'd bring back some ideas to all of you guys on the, in March. We would take out a temporary bond to pay for upfront cross in May. We do seeker, May to, May to June, Chippewa, May-ish. Adopt a bond resolution in July. Now, the idea would be for us to shoot for the moon maybe on the bond resolution and for the proposal, because this is not the end here. What we want to do is go back to some, you know, the basic engineering, not a full-blown engineering plan for these proposed changes to the wastewater plant, but enough to submit, resubmit to the New York State D E C to try to get a grant, you know, next year. Just because we got the zero interest loan doesn't mean that we shouldn't try for a grant for the next go around next year. Also, we should probably try for a USDA grant. The hardship would be that we already have pretty significant rate for the wastewater. And that it's because we're primary of residential customers. So we would try for both D E C. I think he meant to say E F C. He put D E C, but I think he meant E F C here. And for USDA. So then we would do all the, the bond resolution. We'd get the professional agreements together in May, that may, between May and February of 2023. At that point, we define the construct, we define to get it approved. And then we can, we have a lot of leeways when we would actually do the project. It's not like there's a short fuse on when we would actually conduct the work. So I just wanted to put the timeline out there for you guys to see. So.
So Grant, over and above Delaware Engineering, would there be additional engineering costs associated with doing this?
I would prefer to use them because.
No, I mean, no, I'm not saying who is the cost. Delaware has already put a, a, a schedule based on what we did before. So there's recommendations in there. Are you going to task Delaware Engineering to come up with another proposal and the engineering costs associated with that, all that?
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, so we'll need to.
Part of this.
Right.
Right. So now what the idea would be to come up with something pretty like, you know, maybe four or five million dollars worth of stuff we want to do. And if we don't get anything except the zero interest loan, which is quite a benefit, it's like getting a, you know, 30% grant or whatever, then we shrink the project because we really have to pay, pay for it all on our own. So it's all good. I just wanted to let you know what our thoughts are.
Could they look at redesign for compost?
We talked about that. The engineer at Delaware is not real fond of getting in the composting business right now because of the P F O's, the forever chemicals. We can talk about that, though. I wouldn't. I like the idea because we were paying to haul this stuff away and we're paying more than we were last year, that's for sure. The one-up court, it's going up. And it's going up all the time.
Right, and other communities have figured out how to do the composting, I'm assuming with the P F O's issue, yeah?
It's, no, it's, the P F O's are coming down the, the pike.
Which pike? Like the D E C pike? Okay.
No, the new regs that are going to be coming out from the D E C. Maybe Brandy, Brandy's.
Brandy just showed up.
Yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a really significant issue that we're tracking and it's ever evolving, Lydia. The P F O's were first identified in drinking water systems and now we're basically finding them in all systems. And so the concern with composting the sludge is that then you're, you know, distributing that compost and, you know, you've essentially concentrated the P F O's in the sludge. But by composting it, you are not necessarily breaking it down into lesser toxic chemicals. So it, it's an emerging area, but it's an area that we're just cautioning municipalities moving forward with changing how they're handling their sludge into composting. So I, Grant, I agree with the engineer from Delaware on that. Proceed with caution because the regs are changing very rapidly.
And we have to, we have these geo textile bags that are filled with concentrated, you know, sludge from the water plant. We need to. You know what I would like to do, since we're talking about this? Can I call Rich and, and call Randy at the City of Poughkeepsie?
Randy Olson.
Yeah, Randy Olson. We, we've offered his services to you a lot. So yeah, he's available.
And I just want to talk to him about what he, what, is he worried about? Because we have the same, we're going to have the same exact material. And where is he, where is he headed with this? And I want, you know, Rich to give an opinion about the origin issue from sending this somewhere, like locally. Is it something we should be worried about?
Town of Poughkeepsie hauls theirs away, you know, on a regular basis, so.
Yeah. But is that climate going to change? I don't know. We, we know what the numbers are and that, we've tested it.
Right.
And if New York comes up with a new standard, which they probably will.
Yeah, every year we wait is going to be more stringent to get rid of that stuff.
Yeah. So if you guys don't mind, I'm going to call Rich and just have a conversation with him. And Randy.
Absolutely, yeah.
He's, he's offered his, he's offered his services, as I told you before.
Okay.
Okay. Environmental, Vanessa.
Okay, so I'm very pleased to announce that we have accepted 103 participants to our village compost pilot. And three of those participants are folks who actually needed to be sponsored, so they will be participating for free because very generous members of the community came forward and offered to pay on their behalf, which is just a very lovely example of the Redback community coming together. At this point, we are going to be working on some onboarding. And we will be giving education to the participants. And then the pilot commences on March 1st, runs for six months through August 31st. So that's, it's great. I'm really happy that we met our goal of at least 100 people. Also want to give an update on the Flex Tech Energy Study of Village Hall. We should have a draft report from M E Engineering probably next week. So that will be right in time for our budget discussion, so that will be really helpful. And let's see. Chrissy was working really hard with me to do energy benchmarking. You know, we passed our benchmarking resolution. And so that says we need to make a public report of our energy usage on municipal properties. However, Central Hudson has had this billing debacle. You know, some of you may have even gotten Visa gift cards in the mail. And so because there's this gap in our utility bills, we're not able to finish our benchmarking report. But as soon as that's cleared up, we hope to do two years' worth of, of our bills. So that's why there's a delay there. I also wanted to give an update on the Natural Resources Inventory Project. So as I've mentioned before, this is a set of 25 maps. This is in collaboration with the town. And in addition to the maps, we also have a report that interprets the maps and points out pertinent information regarding our, our, our environment here. And so we're working really hard on that report. And I would like to put a call out to the public if there's any expertise out there, whether you're, you know. Um, whether you're uh, you know, a climate scientist or um. Uh, a hydrologist or a geologist, we could definitely use your help. Um, our goal is to have a draft of this report. By the end of February and then circulate it for review. And I will really, really need review from um, uh, from you all. Um, on the board and uh, planning board, town planning board. Um, this document will only be as custom to Rhinebeck as we can make it. And that means we need to draw upon all the institutional knowledge. Um. And put it into this document. So um. In an effort to try to raise awareness about this project, I'm launching a call for photography from the public. Um, so I will be asking um, amateur, professional. If you love Rhinebeck and you have beautiful pictures of it. Um, please submit your photos. Uh, there's web page now on climatesmartrhinebeck dot O R G. And um. You know, if we get some beautiful photos, we'll be able to include it in the Natural Resources Inventory. Perhaps we could also include it in a comprehensive plan project in some way. Um. And it will be a great kind of community project. Um. You know, it's not, it's not a contest, um, but it's a call for photos. And I have asked Oblong Books to curate. A list of some um, beautiful nature photography books that we could give as thank yous. To any standout submissions. Um, so if you're, if you're a photographer, I think we're all photographers these days. But if you have particularly beautiful shots, um, please submit them. Okay, so um. The, another project that is our, our, our wonderful Mara students who recently. Uh. They, they came and they gave a presentation for the board. They have finished the first draft of a prototype. Um, which is actually kind of a live predictive model of uh, flooding along the Landsman Kill and the Asher Dam. And that is a, is a browser-based um, tool. So now anyone can go and you can see this. Keep in mind, this is a working prototype. The students will continue to work on it, but that is also linked from the Climate Smart. ClimateSmartRhinebeck.org website, and you can check it out. Um. The idea here is to compile all of the data from um, the sensor on Landsman Kill, from weather data. Weather station data and be able to alert. Um, us on the board and Mayor Bassett. Um, when we need to preemptively open up the valves and uh, valves on the Asher Dam. To prevent uh, you know, backup and flooding. So a huge thank you to the students who are doing this work for free, for the goodness of getting real life experience. Okay, so, and now finally turning to a little bit of a discussion here. Um. Whether or not to take payments at the E V charging stations, the municipal charging stations. At the main parking lot and then over in the smaller parking lot behind the uh, Village Police Department. And um, I did, I do have some numbers to read off just for context. Some places are. Making the decision to offer free charging. As a public service, not unlike we maintain our parks, those are open to the public. For the public to enjoy. Um. And thinking of it that way as a public good. Um, the larger picture here is we're trying to incentivize people to get off of fossil fuel vehicles, move to E Vs. That's part of, we're part, we're one little place, one little point on the map. Of a whole larger movement to try to get off of fossil fuels. Um. Now. I did look at some other, so example of that is Red Hook. They've made the conscious decision to not charge. Um. Now, then just up the way at the Bard Alumni Center, they charge a dollar fifty per hour to charge at their stations. City of Beacon, at their municipal E V charging stations, it's a dollar and twenty-five cents an hour. Um. Montgomery Police Visitor Center. One dollar an hour. Um. The Ulster County Department of Social Services is fifty cents an hour. And the Shoprite in Poughkeepsie is twenty-five cents an hour. So there is a bit of a range here. Um, according from this quick survey, a buck fifty is kind of pricey. And uh, free is also an option. So I'm bringing this up because um, as we talked about earlier in the meeting. The um, the monies that came with the grant have at this point been spent. And um, so it's up to us to make a choice whether we're going to um, continue to offer this for free or to start charging something. And so we did hear from some citizens who are concerned and think it's unfair that they, that they should go free. Um, but there is this other side of the coin that we're trying to um, do right by our, our, our planet. Um. The other option would be to set some sort of limit on the time, how, the duration of how much time you can be plugged in and getting a free charge. Um, to limit it to say two hours or three hours. Um. And I, I don't know, Mary, maybe Carrie, you know, if you could actually in, you know, enforce that with a mechanism with the charger? Or would that have to be enforced by the police?
So, yeah, you can, the, the way the tool works, and thank you for giving, saying all that because that's the information that I supplied you with. Um. There's multiple ways to do this. As you set the time limit, you can then, you shut the charger off and the note, and the operator gets a notice. Automatically that their charging is complete and they have to come and remove their car. And so additional notices can be sent out like that. Or you can incentivize it. You say you get the first two hours free, just like we provide. Uh, parking on, on Main Street, and then after that two hours, you start charging. And it goes in an escalated charge based on the time that they're connected, so. Yeah, there's ways to enforce it. We can also have the police who drive by, can see a car parked there. And it's easy to see if the, if the charging station is off and then they could. Also enforce that, that portion if there's, if the car hasn't been moved. Because I believe we do want to limit the people who are day parking. For, you know, and, and our cars charger and leaving to sit there or night parking or whatever to. Free up these facilities to be used more frequently by other people. So there's lots of mechanisms to use. Through notifications and our enforcement.
I, I also have a, have a question. Um. W w w w what? So we know now what other communities are charging, if anything. Um, what does it cost us per hour to provide this resource?
We pay, we pay, I think, six, six, six and a half. I don't know what the current rate is because it changes, but we pay. Like seven cents a kilowatt hour. Right, so whatever the usage is, and that's all on the spreadsheet.
Okay, so even with our solar panels on the top, because I mean, one, one of the questions that I had was like, if, if our solar panels are providing, you know, basically free power to both. Village Hall and the Police Department, as well as these charging stations, then it's free power, and so therefore it's free power. But i- if we are actually incurring a cost for this, then you know, that's a useful metric for this conversation.
The solar panels only provide to the municipal building. The, the Police Department's on a separate meter, separate.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
And the charging stations behind the police station are tied into the police station, not into Village Hall, so they're not getting the advantage of the solar power. And we're consuming solar power here in our building.
Okay.
You know, and still paying an electric bill.
Okay, got it. So, you know, anything more than six and a half cents an hour, or whatever it is, we'd be making money off of. And so not only would we not be subsidizing it, but we'd actually be. Turning a profit if that's an even appropriate way to think about this.
But that was a killer, that's a, this electricity is really hard. That's like a kilowatt hour. But how many kilowatt hours does the car?
Consume in an hour.
Yeah.
Right.
And it depends on, that depends on the car.
On the car.
Yeah, so all cars are different. Teslas consume more per hour than what a Fiat does, for instance, or whatever, so in. And there's all those metrics, and I gave all of you the access to the site a long time ago, and I reshared that with Vanessa, so she could collect those ma- metrics and. And actually do a deep dive of the analysis. But I also want to say that some of the places that Vanessa listed aren't municipalities. Barn is not even municipality.
Right, either Shoprite.
And, you know, Bard didn't get, you know, Bard didn't get the same grants and everything that we all got, so that's why they're charging for them. Right, so, you know, it's, you can't compare apples, it's not apples to apples based on who's charging what. You know, that's why Barn is charging a lot of money as well.
Because they're trying to cover the cost of the equipment and all the rest.
And nobody, and nobody uses their charging stations.
Because they charge so much?
Yeah, they sit empty. I mean, there'll be some cars, but. Uh, my wife's parking lot where she parks, she parks right by them every day and they're, they're empty every day.
Interesting.
As, as well as some of the others, you know. Um. Hannaford's up in Kingston just put in eight new charging stations. Um. They're not free, but Hannaford is charging for it, and they're gonna, they're now Tesla, but their rumor is they're going to open that up to all cars, so this is an expanding market. There's a lot more charging stations going in all over where people have accessibility to. Uh, as Vanessa mentioned, this is, you could consider this a public benefit, which is what I told Ben, told Vanessa. Um, to do, and it is also an attraction to our village, to our businesses. That are able to, we attract people off of the highways to come and participate in the village and enjoy what we have here. Um, because it. Everybody wants to get something, right?
I think it would be really helpful. Um. I, I think this is uh, worth a conversation starting for the new fiscal year. I mean, I think it would be a really helpful thing to have as part of like the budget conversation, to be perfectly honest. Um, and, and, and as part of that. If there's any way we can figure this out, I mean, I know Teslas versus Chevy Bolts versus whatever. Um. If there's any way that we can figure out kind of a range of what, you know. Two hours sitting at the charging station. Costs us, because the la, I mean, because to this point, I, I do think that encouraging people to move on to this kind of um, technology is really important. Um. But i- if it's, you know, really putting a dent into the village lineup, um, and I know that really and dent are all. S- super squishy words, but um. I, 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 I think it would just be important, it would be in- interesting to have some clarity around what it's actually costing the village that we can. You know, is this a fifty thousand dollar problem or is this a five hundred dollar problem? You know what I mean? Um, and problem is the wrong word as well. But uh, i- it would be helpful to know what we're actually talking about in terms of the subsidy. Um. I- in- instead of just sort of speaking in, without that particular piece of information. I would find that very helpful.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of, there's a lot of analytics out there on our.
Okay.
Site, which you're all welcome to go look at.
I, I, I have, I've said that I think I would be in favor of a nominal charge, so our costs associated with um, running these, I mean, we had an incident where one of the last. Winter, one of the plows ran over one of the connections. We had to.
One of, one of our, I, one of our highway truck plows.
One of our highway trucks, it was, it was a self, a self-inflicted wound, a self-inflicted wound, but nonetheless.
A wound, a wound nonetheless, exactly.
A wound nonetheless, um.
And we, and we did just recently pay thirteen hundred dollars in a, in a, in a renewal fee to maintain the accessibility to them, so. You know, there's, there's some incidental cost over and above electric.
Yeah, and, and, and I, and I mean, I think, I mean, somebody, somebody said it before. I, I, it's hard for me to believe that at. Fifty cents or a dollar an hour. Somebody's going to spend five hours in Rhinebeck, that five dollars to charge their car is going to make that much of a marginal difference. To whether they are going to come up or not, or if it's, you know, fifty cents an hour. You know, two dollars and fifty cents. Um, I, I, it's hard for me to believe that that really would change people's marginal behavior.
Right, we'll find out.
I think it would change the behavior of people coming and leaving their car there overnight and not charging at home. You know, like, who live here, who are just like using it.
Right. And our, and our people in the village that, that take advantage of that, and that's why I said we could put a two-hour limit on it. That's one of the, one of the options you can do, and just say, hey, listen, you can park, you can park your car for two hours for free, right? You can use our parks for free, you can do this for free, but after two hours, you gotta. Move on.
I mean, on the issue of encouraging tourism, it's like, well, we. We do so much for the tourism. I mean, it's just staggering. I mean. If we were in the middle of my land, we wouldn't even need a police department, you know, I mean. We pay how much for policing for Centerclaws? It's, you know, if we could just get. A little bit back. From people that can eas- easily afford it, you know? We're not getting it back for all the policing that we do for all our events where we don't get it.
Yeah, legally, we can't charge for, for protection.
Well, we can, we can just. Get nominally compensated for.
We can't charge for protection.
Yeah, but I mean, but I mean, someone shows up with their Tesla.
That doesn't contradict what I said, but.
Yeah, someone shows up with their Tesla, they spend all day parked in the village parking lot, they have free parking, and they have a free charge back to New York or wherever they came from, and, you know, I mean, I, I, I do think that there is. You know, there is making us a, 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 a town, a village that is friendly to visitors, and then there is making us a village that bends over backwards for our visitors. Um, at the expense of our residents, and I think that we, this is an opportunity to perhaps um, e- examine the balance between that in this particular respect. Um. And. Yeah. So I, 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 I will, I will find the information to look at the website for those metrics, because I think it would be an interesting. It, it would just be interesting to understand what exactly we're talking about, what the dollar figures are that we're talking about.
Remember, Gary, once the calculation is very hard because of the way it's metered and that we were billed to actually figure out what the, what the actual cost was, right? Because, because of the way they were set up.
Not, not the way the E V charging stations were set up, it's the way the Police Department has been set up because it's a demand metering. And the man. And it has, that is, that has no effect on the, that's there regardless of whether you have E V chargers or not.
Okay, well, I think just we can, you know, we can make an effort here and we can figure out an answer and, an answer, and we can talk about it during the budgeting process, I think.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah. Joanne seems to have a question.
Thanks. Vanessa, thank you so much for your work. I really admire it, and I hope to go on that amphibian crossing.
Yay.
But um. Not, not everything is the right move, in my opinion. Let me just say, I categorically am against. Giving it for free. Once again, I feel like it looks like we want more tourists. That's good for the businesses. What about us residents that keep? Putting the bill, I don't care if it's five dollars or a hundred and five dollars. I, I think on principle, if people can afford a Tesla, they can afford a couple of bucks to charge it. And I don't want to be the suffer to pay for them. That's just my opinion, thank you.
And our residents are using it, so it's not just tourists, just to be clear.
Then I don't want to pay, I don't want to pay for my neighbors to charge. If they want to give me something towards my gas, that's great. If they want to help me buy a Tesla, that's even better.
Yeah, let's, let's move, let's move on here. We, it's, it's going on nine o'clock. Thank you, thank you, Joanne. You done, Vanessa?
Yes, thank you.
All right.
Um, I have a comment. Uh, I had my hand up, do you mind? It's Pat Evans. Um, we don't.
Well, I guess you interrupted, so go ahead, Pat.
Well, I had my hand up, I had my hand up. Joanne got, had her hand up too, so I just wanted to jump in and ask a question about the metrics. What percentage of charging is done by people in the one-two-five-seven-two area code or Rhinebeck residents?
How would you know? How would you know?
I think that's worth examining as part of the question that we're gonna examine as part of the question, Pat.
I, I don't, how would you know?
What's that?
I don't know. Pat, Pat, we'll take a look at the, at the metrics and see if they include the zip code of the owner of the car.
You can, you can have people sign in. You can have people sign in, but currently we don't have people sign in. But that is one of the options you can, that's one of the options you can put in.
But, but when we used to do it before a long time ago, when, when we did it, we had a card and that card is tied to us. And everybody should have an ID as part of the metric, correct?
They can, yes. Absolutely. We can set it up that way.
Okay.
But currently, they just go and they plug in. They don't have to insert a card into the machine.
Well, we had to when we did it.
Yeah, you can, you can, you have to activate it, Vanessa. You activate it by either signing in or who you are, right? But it doesn't, I don't know if it gives your ID of where you live. So like, if you were to go sign up with your Tesla, Vanessa, and you do it, you have to go to that charging station. You log into that Tesla station and, into that charging station and reserve that port. And then plug it into your car. So it knows who you are. It may not know where you live.
Well, I think, I think all, I think all of these are important things to think about as we investigate the question. And right now, we're at the very beginning of investigating the question, so.
Yeah, and so we're gonna, we're, this conversation will continue. There's probably a lot of hands raised up, but in the essence of time. I appreciate it. If you want to submit your questions, submit your questions to Vanessa, who's taken the lead on this and she can work on getting the analytics, which is something we talked about.
Thank you.
Alright, so moving on, um, fire department. Fire department for December, firing mess were sixty-nine and January was ninety-eight. The most exciting news here is that the new rescue truck has arrived at Garrison. And that's close enough here for us to go look at. The fire depart- fire department went and looked at it on, on January thirty-first, went over it, um, were I'm gonna say impressed as, as all could be as to this rescue truck. So there's still some work to be done, the lettering and the tool mounting and then the transfer of parts. Uh, but we're hoping to take, they're hoping to get delivery of this rescue truck in the next three weeks. So that's, that's exciting. We've been a long time waiting for this rescue truck and, and desperately needed it. As we mentioned, we're working on the budget with them, so that's in process. And they would also like to give a thank out to the highway crews who are doing a good job cleaning up around the firehouse after the snowstorms. Cause they've done a great job. And there's also, we're always happy to say that uh, two new members have been accepted as active probationary members to Reinbeck Fire Department by the membership committee. And, you know, to bring them forward, we've proved before that we don't need to approve them, we can just accept them and they'll go on. But I also want, I do want to acknowledge that we're getting new members and I'd like to thank David Edelson and Owen Mulligan for their willingness to join the Reinbeck Fire Department. So welcome everyone. Okay. Comprehensive Plan Committee.
Great, thank you. Um, so I wanted to uh, take a minute and share what's been going on. Um, and I just wanted to start the whole process by saying that the, the whole comprehensive plan process has been an extraordinary learning experience for me. Um, sometimes a less pleasant one, to be perfectly honest. I am relatively new to the village. I am clearly new to the board. Um, and there are some ways that I, I ran this process that um, I was so excited about making sure that we had a huge number of people involved in a huge ecosystem to create a new vision for the future of the village that um, I, I, there were, there were moments where I forgot that there are certain ways to go about doing that specifically here in Reinbeck. And uh, I'm learning that at an incredibly steep rate, at an incredibly fast speed at the moment. That there were some people who I didn't have conversations with, who um, would have rathered I'd done that. Um, there are a lot of people with a lot of opinions and really wonderful opinions and I want all of the opinions about how to make sure that we are doing it properly and, and to do it better. And I, I, I just welcome everyone who is part of this conversation to remember that at the other end of your emails and phone calls and text messages, there is a human who is just trying her best. So please just remember that when you're talking to me. And uh, that to create a truly diverse ecosystem for all of us to be able to express um, how we want this village to be moving forward takes time and it takes effort and it takes identifying humans who are not only willing to volunteer at all, but willing to volunteer at certain levels. Um, and making sure that those uh, people represent as many factors of the village that we have, as much diversity as we have in this village, making sure that we have people who represent that at every stage of the process is hugely important to me. Um, and I am aware that it is hugely important to a lot of people who've been commenting to me most recently. Um, Victor, at the beginning of the meeting, thank you Victor for your thoughtful comments. So I want you to know, and I will, um, I mentioned this last month and I'm gonna, and I'm gonna say it again here. The first seven appointments where I hope, were, 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 were what I hope to be the first seven of dozens of people, if not more than that, who will participate in this process. Because of how comprehensive plans tend to have ability to spin out of control in terms of both time and finances, um, I made sure that the first seven people were uh capable of running the process, um, obviously with help from lawyers and consultants, but not leaning entirely on lawyers and consultants for the work to be done. Because I was looking for that particular expertise, uh, it resulted in the first seven appointees perhaps not not being as diverse as uh, on, on multiple factors, that I would hope that, that, that they themselves hope, that I know that you all here, the five, the, the four of you that I'm looking at as well as many members of the village ecosystem uh, would also hope. So I, I want you to understand that this is not something that I am not aware of. Um, and it is really something that uh, Matt Johnston, who's the new chair and I, as well as the rest of the committee are, a- as well as many members of the village board trustees are working really hard to try and um, resolve, uh, for lack of a better way to think about it. You know, the, the current committee is diverse in multiple ways. You know, not racially or, or, or gender, and those are both things that I would like to fix. Um, but they are diverse in multiple ways. You know, four have lived in the Reinbeck area for over twenty years, one eleven to twenty years, one three to five years, one zero to two years. Two are under thirty-four years old, one is forty-five to fifty-four, four sixty-five to seventy-four. Um, they are diverse politically. Um, they're diverse in terms of their sexuality. The uh, five own their homes, two rent their homes. Six, which was important to me, uh, six of the seven have served in some capacity on either a government or school committee, currently or in the past. All of them are, are highly interested in making sure that the village of Reinbeck and the larger area remains diverse economically, which is, which sort of flat on addressing the Hamptons problem that many people are very concerned about. Understandably, given the amount of money that's moved into the area, many people are very concerned about Reinbeck turning into the quote unquote Hamptons. And I want you to know that the village comprehensive plan committee is also very concerned about that problem. All are highly concerned about the historic fabric of the village and making sure that we maintain it. One is a teacher or a school administrator, two are professional planners and architects. One is a lawyer turned real estate agent who has a really remarkable story about the demise of her own hometown in Texas due to economic forces. And part of the reason why she moved to Reinbeck and wanted to engage in this process was to make sure that doesn't happen here. One is a small business owner here in the village. And one is a partner in a large real estate company, but spends most of his professional time managing his restaurant. And then the last one is Matt, our new chair. I recruited Matt to be the chair of this committee specifically because his professional expertise is the the facilitation, innovation, uh, the facilitation of innovation, design and strategy work for government and Fortune five hundred teams from around the world and his personal interest, and it's becoming a professional interest of his, is in the economic biodiversity of the Hudson Valley and making sure that our local ecosystem economic and otherwise is capable of providing everything that the people who live here need. So I, I, I consider even inside the fact that the first seven people are not uh, you know, diverse in ways that we would think of diverse, I actually consider them to be a really diverse group of people who are highly concerned and highly dedicated to the future of the village. But they're also the first seven of eleven to the main committee and I hope dozens to the subcommittee effort. And then I hope hundreds who have the ability and desire to comment and participate in all sorts of public listening processes that we are going to be engaging in. We've currently scheduled ten open meetings from now until the end of the year for the main committee. Um, all of those dates are on uh, the comprehensive plan website. Matt Johnston himself has met with more than forty stakeholders in the community in a series of short conversations um, in the past two or three weeks. We are working really hard to identify the final four penny, appointees to the main committee. Um, I was hoping to elevate one tonight. But you know, more conversations are necessary there. I have a weekly, I, I have a weekly um, standing liaison meeting with Matt that lasts at least an hour and a half. The next meeting, for those of you who are interested, is on February seventeenth from seven to eight thirty. Um, we're gonna, PM, we're gonna figure out where. Um, it is open to all and it has a particular focus on inviting those who are interested and willing to participate in the subcommittee work. So even though we have not, you know, formally introduced the subcommittee structure, that is what's going to happen um, on February seventeenth. Um, and then volunteer and subcommittee training will occur on March third from seven to eight thirty PM. Um, so to make sure that people know how we are choosing um, to run this committee. We're choosing to run it in a very open dialogue, making sure that there's um, ways for people to feel heard. Um, and we want to make sure that that is uh, filtering down to every single committee um, in, in the ecosystem. Uh, at the moment, this, the committee is proposing a three season project. Um, we're gonna spend the spring, they'll, they'll spend the spring uh, listening and looking, the summer um, understanding and, and and really figuring out what, what it is that they listened and heard, um, listened to and heard. And then the fall will be the process of actually making the report. Current projects being considered, a booth or a table at every farmer's market for the year inviting community participation. Um, a series of hosted clubhouse-like audio-only community, community conversations with topics and invited co-hosts. Visualizations and trackers for the number of care hours contributed to the project by all stakeholders. We have a schedule um, laid out. We're gonna add it to the, the webpage in terms of what will happen in each month of this process. Obviously, if it needs to extend past, um, you know, the winter of twenty twenty-three, when we were hoping to have the formal public hearings and the adoption, um, it will, but we understand from people who have done a lot of work on this, that if there is a change in elected leadership, things become problematic and I am not guaranteed to be here uh, after the election next year. And uh, also uh, the community gets fatigued. Um, and so the longer these projects last, uh, it, it just lasts longer without actually adding more um, value to the process. What else? Oh, we have created a email address. Um, and a wonderful person has volunteered to help us manage that email address. It is ourthrivingfuture@villageofreinbeckny.gov. Once again, that's ourthrivingfuture@villageofreinbeck.gov. I'm going to start forwarding a lot of the concerns that I have received straight to my inbox to that uh, to that email. To make sure that the, the many who are focused on this one issue pay attention to them instead of the one who is focused on many issues uh, has, so that I have help. And then as for all of this, um, I just wanna reiterate that diverse, thoughtful, well researched, well managed uh, committees take time to create, they take time to appoint, um, they take time to identify the humans involved. And all that any of us want is to make sure that this end result is reflective of who the village is and what the village wants. And the only way we're gonna do that is if we have, you know, as many people who reflect as many facets of the village in it. And I am looking forward to being um, the liaison to a committee that really reflects that. And I just need to ask um, for everybody's uh, uh, continued engagement, but also patience in that process. So that is, uh, oh, all, all of these reports will end up on the, the committee webpage. Just some of them need to be finalized. Um, so I promise that that will be occurring over the course of the next week. And that is the comprehensive plan committee reports. Plus, a, plus a small beg from the trustee who is the liaison.
Lydia, I still hope people will fill out the form and come forward.
Yes, yes. So the, the survey is open, it will remain open. The survey is there to identify, to basically make sure that we're collecting all of the information that we need from people who are willing to um, willing and excited and all the rest of it to volunteer in some way. It's also helping us identify people who thought they were gonna be doing subcommittee work and might be encouraged to join the main committee. So yes, if, if you are interested in this work, um, and, and even, please fill out the survey. It's on the, it's on the webpage. If you are just excited about making sure that you know when conversations are happening and all the rest of it, please join the village mailing list. That is how we are communicating. Um, like Rick, I, you did, th- this is at the moment, one of our few ways of communicating with people. Um, I'm trying to get an article on the Kingston Freeman. There's a few sort of radio shows in the area, but our lack of local um, news is impacting us in multiple ways. And um, this is one of them. So w- we're working hard to try to be as communicative as possible. And uh, you know, i- i- it, it helps that if you want to know about this, that you're at least signed up for the email lists where I can promise you the information will be pushed out. And at the very, and if, and if you don't want to sign up for an email list, that's fine. The information will also be on the comprehensive plan committee webpage, which is live on the Village of Reinbeck website.
So Lydia, two things.
Yes.
I, I think you're doing an amazing job and I really appreciate all the heart and soul and the words that you're putting forth through it. And, and I really hope people.
Thank you, Rick.
And, and I hope people really do appreciate the, this deep sincerity of what you're saying. Much question is completely technical. When you said the webs, excuse me, the email address, you said Village of Reinbeck.
Oh, sorry, ourthrivingfuture@villageofreinbeckny.gov. Is that what it is? Yeah, yeah.
You dropped the NY.
Okay, sorry. I did not mean to drop the NY. Yes, our thriving future at villageofreinbeckny.gov. It is also um, on the village webpage, the comprehensive plan webpage. So if you just click on that, it'll take you to however you do your email.
So Vanessa, Vanessa, uh, you and I've chatted a lot about this. Um, and again, thank you, excuse me, not Vanessa, Lydia, I'm sorry. Um, you and I've chatted a lot about this and, you know, trials and tribulations of running a major committee like this is, is definitely challenging in a lot of ways. But one of the questions I get and we chatted about is, there's a lot of people that want to dump up the app, dump up, dump out the apple cart and start all over again, right? And they're really looking to reinvent or create this vision and they all are opinionated and they're all good opinions, as you mentioned.
Sure, yeah.
But you know, in a sense, I just want to reiterate that we're trying to do this within a controlled way, as you mentioned, to reiterate this. And that we're really not, we're trying to take advantage of a lot of the good work that was already done. Put meets and bounds on this project so that we can maintain and control what we need to do. It may not end with everything. We may have to keep going for a lot of other, other good subjects. But at some point, you're gonna come out with, here's the structure and here's the things that we're gonna look at. And one of the things I think people are struggling with is, they want to know if they're And one of the things I think people are struggling with is they want to know if their item is on that list. And so that's an important thing that I want to address to people is that please be patient. You guys are doing a phenomenal job. You're working on putting those meet and bounds in place to really come up with a thoughtful plan of what we can work on for now.
Well, and, and also too, if you're, thank you, Gary. That's a very good point. And, and also if you're, if you are really sort of interested in this process, read the 1993 plan. It's on the comprehensive plan webpage. It's, you know, it's long. It'll take up an evening. But there's a lot of really good work in that 1993 plan that you'll find resonates today. There are aspects of it that don't resonate today, but there are some aspects of it that do continue to resonate today. Obviously, all of the demographic data, the census data, you know, all of that is going to be updated. As I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, the DOT is doing a thing on, on the road, you know. So like, all of the information that needs to be updated to make current will be certainly updated. But some of the thoughts, I mean, affordable housing was identified as a problem in 1993. It remains a problem today. And so, you know, you, you will, it is a good plan that we had in 1993 and it just, and it needs updating. And as part of that updating process, we're just, you know, the comprehensive plan committee is gonna be having so many open calls for comment and open calls for meetings and ways for people to engage. I just, you know, beg for all of you to remember that the committee itself is 11 people. And each one of those 11 people is one of 11 people. And the report itself will be vetted publicly to all of you. You will have opportunities to comment even once the report is written and you will have comments or opportunities to comment throughout the entire process. And then even after that, the village board has to vote to approve it. So there, you know, no one person in this entire process has complete or even a great deal of control over what the content of it will say. And especially if we can get more and as many people involved, each one person's contribution is obviously diluted by that much. So that's why we want to have as many people involved and as many voices heard. And for that, I, I really just appreciate all of your engagement and, and contributions and patience. Joanne, I can't tell if your hand is still up from the last question or, or, or on this one, but I'm gonna defer to Gary on whether or not we have time to, to address those.
You know, I'd like to keep moving.
Okay. Oh, that's right. She took her hand down.
If you have questions again, you know, as we mentioned before.
Send them to ourthrivingfuture@villageofrhinebeckny.gov.
I just forgot to lower my hand.
The teacher's gonna keep calling on you, Joanne. So. All right. So you, you got the email, ourthrivingfuture@villageofrhinebeckny.gov. Send your comments. Okay. Thank you, Lydia.
Thank you.
Okay. Personnel, we're getting, we are getting towards the end here. As always, we'd like to, you know, recognize those people who, who worked for the village of Rhinebeck and have contributed so greatly to everything that we, that we try to do. And two of those, Carl Delfino, he's one of our highway guys. He's an MEO. He's been with us six years. Carl's well-diverse and well-talented. He single-handedly runs a leaf truck, all, you know, all fall, all fall by himself, plus many other tasks. So, you know, a great asset to the village. And Ryan Dowden, building, planning and zoning clerk. I'd just like to just, you know, everybody just to remind them, Ryan's father, Bill Dowden, just recently passed. And he's going through a very difficult time. So give us a little bit of breadth and space as we're working with Ryan. As he's dealing with this tragedy to his family. But Ryan is a very knowledgeable person. He contributes a lot to working with our, with everybody who comes in with questions. He does his best to get all of those questions out and responded to as best as possible. And Ryan's been with us already four years. So please, you know, if you see Ryan, wish him the best and thank him for all he does for the village of Rhinebeck. Lastly, and you know, one thing I'd like to say is the pandemic is coming down as fast as it went up, I hope. And things are looking more towards a brighter future or maybe a different future for the village of Rhinebeck. And I say different because we've all changed in the things that we do, the way we operate, how we communicate, how we greet each other. You know, all of our aspects of our lives have been impacted a lot over the last two plus years. We're all hoping to get through this as best as possible. But the state is moving forward and I'm looking forward to some announcements hopefully from our governor this week. And maybe another step to return to normalcy in our next monthly meeting. I'm hoping to be able to have again, an in-person meeting that we can all be together and, and work together on. So stay tuned for that. We're gonna be watching the metrics to see how we do. But I'd like to be able to return to an in-person meeting again next month. So with that, I thank you all for hanging in there with us for three and a half hours, three hours and 45 minutes.
Three hours and 45 minutes.
It's been a long evening. It's again, a long evening, but there's a lot of good stuff. This board is working hard for you. I continuously say that, that everybody on this board is doing their best for the village of Rhinebeck. So thank you all for what you do as well. But with that, I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, Lydia. I hope there's no discussion, but all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.